So we did not adjourn the meeting last night because I saw this as a continuation hearing, but we will be taking roll call and if we need to adjourn this evening, just let me know so I don't do that again. Before we start, I would just want to say welcome to everybody. It's great to see lots of you here today. We've got a couple items that are regular city business because it's our Tuesday council meeting that we'll do first and then we'll move into the issue that I imagine brought all of you here. So with that, clerk, will you call the roll? Agent.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Annie Keith.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
Woodings.
Here.
All present. Thank you. And next up, we've got minutes from June 6th for approval.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the City Council minutes from the work session and regular evening meeting of June 6th, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Clerk, will you call the roll? Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. So next, we have the consent agenda. Typically, I have a script on this agenda, so I'm going to wing it. All items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be considered in one motion unless otherwise requested by a citizen or council member.
Well done, Madam Mayor.
I think that's good enough. All right.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would just like to note that we, in the consent agenda today, have the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes fortuitously when they heard the zoning code that we are also reviewing today. So I just thought that that was interesting to note.
And with that, clerk, will you please call the roll? Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Annie Keith.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Willetts.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
Agent.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. And now we'll move into ordinances. We have one on first reading.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on first reading be read by number and title only and filed for the second reading calendar.
Without objection.
ORD-22-23, an ordinance, CAR22-00046, for property located at 3121 East Starview Drive. Amending zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change the classification of real property, particularly described in Section 1 of this ordinance and adjacent rights away from A-1 open lands to R-1Z, single-family residential, eight units per acre. Setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such zone change and providing an effective date.
And now we'll move on to second reading where we've got a couple.
Madam Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on the second reading calendar be read by number and title only and filed for the third reading calendar.
Without objection.
ORD-19-23, an ordinance repealing and replacing Boise City Code Title 1, Chapter 12, Article F, entitled Present for Public Art, changing the name to Present for Art. New Section 1, providing an expanded contribution of eligible capital improvement funds from 1% to 1 and 2 tenths percent while eliminating the 4 tenths percent set aside for maintenance and expanding the scope beyond public art to cultural assets. New Section 2, adding new definitions. New Section 3, defining eligible capital improvement projects and exclusions. New Section 4, defining the role of the Arts and History Department in facilitating the Present for Art program. New Section 5, outlining permissible uses of Present for Art funds to include acquisition and exhibition of cultural assets, as well as costs associated with management, planning, and education. New Section 6, explaining the calculation of 1 and 2 tenths of eligible project costs and providing for rollover of unspent funds. New Section 7, providing for maintenance costs in the city's normal annual or interim budget process and identifying maintenance as a responsibility of the Department of Arts and History, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date. ORD-20-23, an ordinance repealing Boise City Code Title 3, Chapter 14, entitled Stationless Shared Mobility Programs and striking it from the code. Amending Boise City Code Title 6, Chapter 13, Section 1, to add new definitions and amend existing ones. Adding a new Boise City Code Title 6, Chapter 13, Section 2, entitled Rental of Shared Micro mobility Devices and renumbering the subsequent sections accordingly. Amending the renumbered Boise City Code Title 6, Chapter 13, Sections 3, 5, 6, 7, 11, 16, 21, 25, and 29, to remove unnecessary language, correct internal code section references, correct grammatical errors, and provide minor clarifications to existing provisions. Amending the renumbered Boise City Code Title 6, Chapter 13, Section 4, to allow e-scooters to have seats and to remove unnecessary language, correct grammatical errors, and provide minor clarifications to existing provisions. Amending the renumbered Boise City Code Title 6, Chapter 13, Section 22, to clarify registration license fee language. Amending the renumbered Boise City Code Title 6, Chapter 13, Section 23, clarifying fine amounts found on city's master fine and fee schedule and amending minor grammatical errors. Amending the renumbered Boise City Code Title 6, Chapter 13, Section 24, to reference Boise City Code Title Section 1-4-2 and generally clean up code language, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Thank you. And I just want to confirm, we don't have an executive session? Okay, all right. With that, we'll move into new business, the first of two or potentially three evenings of public testimony for our modern zoning code. And before we start, I want to thank everybody for being here, both those of you that are online, as well as all of you that are here in the room. This is the product, and I said last night, but I'll say again, thanks to our staff team, to the committee that spent a couple years working on this and moving around the city and hearing from residents, and to everybody that participated throughout the process. This is, you know, really covers a topic that all of us care deeply about, and that is the home that we live in and the community that we treasure and the neighborhoods that are really important to us. And so I ask that as we have these discussions the next couple of days, we reflect the best of Boise, and that is how much we care, how much we care about the city that we call home, our neighborhoods, and importantly, the people that make this city what it is, and that we reflect that as we share our love of this place and our thoughts on this ordinance in the next couple of days as the council really listens intently and thinks about the next steps for this and appreciate that all of you care enough to come and spend this time with us today. And I do have a list that of folks that have signed up in advance, and I plan to go through it in order. However, I will ask today, as well as tomorrow, if there are folks here that need to leave before this ends for work reasons, for childcare reasons, for other kind of health, or just life must-go-on reasons. If you've got a real reason, I want to make sure that we accommodate that and have you up sooner than you might be in the list. And so please feel free, actually at this point, if you, to let me know. Okay, I see too. So, and if you're online and you have similar issues, like if you happen to be at work and you're trying to sneak this in, let us know and we'll take those too, and then I'll start going through the list. So sir, please come on up. You were first in a blue shirt. And then ma'am in the back, you're next. And then I'll go back to the list unless there's some need to advance, hands raised on Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Jeff Mafuccio with Idaho Power. My work address is 1221 West Idaho Street, Boise, Idaho. I appreciate your, the opportunity today. Idaho Power submitted comments to staff in late May after planning and zoning provided their review and recommendation of the rewrite. And so my testimony will follow along with that letter. We do appreciate the staff included some of our recommendations in their latest edits, but we have one critical recommendation that we'd still like to bring forward. In the current Boise zoning ordinance on Table 11-06.1, electrical substations are, well, and definitions are considered a major utility facility. And within that table, major utility facilities are conditionally used, meaning that they can be approved with a conditionally used permit. And that's in almost all zones with a few exceptions. Idaho Power has worked, successfully worked through that process for years, whether rebuilding substations or new electrical substations. And we feel, you know, we've had good success working with neighborhood associations, neighbors, the public through that transparent process. And the proposed zoning code rewrite, these facilities would only be acceptable in a handful of more heavy industrial type zones or the A zones. And so that indicates Idaho Power that substation facilities would essentially be prohibited in the rest of the city. That would restrict our ability to serve in other zones where additional substation facilities or existing facilities may need to be rebuilt or built to meet electrical service, especially as we have a growing demand through increased density, electrification, and EV charging. So the electrical substation, just very broad overview, is a critical component of the grid. We have electric transmission lines that come in higher voltage. The electricity is kind of broken out and brought out onto distribution lines to neighborhoods, businesses, you know, et cetera. And so within the city limits, we own 17 substations. Many of those are located in residential and commercial districts, best serving those customers locally. Several of them are aging and will require upgrades. We do build new ones on occasion. We're currently working through a new station with Micron's expansion, for example. So there are those cases where we need to meet new load, and a substation is the best way to meet their needs. So we would, you know, hope that the permitting process is an opportunity to improve the service and security aesthetics of these facilities rather than prohibit them outright. We feel that Idaho Power feels that if a substation is prohibited, then, and/or becomes non-conforming, that would just be very challenging for us to provide our, you know, our service to the community. So in return, we would appreciate if, in the rewrite, that the zones allowed these major utility facilities, at least in Idaho Power's case, to be conditionally allowed, I think through the importance of land use planning, public involvement.
Your time, so what I, we do have your comments. I appreciate them. They're in the record, and we'll likely ask staff for some feedback or reaction to that as we move into deliberation.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, one quick question, just to clarify, you're asking for all zones or they're conditionally used in all zones?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
All right. Ma'am, come on up. And then I'd ask that Diana Laciando and then Monica Fabi, Fabi, be, you're next in queue, so just be ready to, we'll use this front row kind of to cue folks up.
Thank you. I'm gonna go get a kiddo from camp here pretty soon. Holly Condi, I am on Abs Lane off of Vista, 83705. I want to start by commending city staff on their efforts in this process. And so it was very refreshing to see the amount of outreach that was done to folks of all different incomes, different neighborhoods, renters, owners. That's not always the case around the country, and so city staff has done an excellent job, and I just really appreciate that, that effort. One thing that needs to be stated loud and clear for everyone is that our city's zoning code was created in the 60s. It is absolutely time for an update. This has to happen. We all know that Boise consistently tops lists of fastest-growing city, best place to live in the country, and that's something that we can be proud of, but it's something that we need to take into consideration and bring us into this modern zoning code. Without a modern plan for growth, we risk turning into one of the examples of what not to do. I want to touch on just a few aspects of the zoning code that I really appreciate. Reduced parking requirements. So we all know that cars take up a lot of space. It's a lot of space, and that adds to the cost of development. And the requirement is what adds the cost, and not everyone requires a vehicle or multiple vehicles. We should be planning around people, not around cars. Open space protections. When we look at land, open space, undeveloped space, some parcels hold a higher conservation value than others. An empty dirt lot should be developed. We should be building it up, not necessarily out. Land is not a finite resource, right, an infinite resource. There's a finite amount that we can build, and so if we can build up, then we reduce Another aspect of this that I really appreciate is the mixed use, right? I want to be able to bike to the grocery store. I want to be able to walk with my child to go get ice cream or, you know, visit a neighborhood shop. These things are important, and when you have huge blocks of homogeneous zoning, it prevents that. A good example of this is an army base, right? If you are on an army base, you have a grocery store, you have all the shops that you need, and you don't have to leave base to get what you need. And so that's something that I think we can do for our city in a similar way. Affordability is obviously a huge issue in Boise. We're being priced out, and so having housing options beyond just, you know, single-family or townhouse or duplex, when we have options, it helps bring affordability closer to reality for a lot of people. I'd rather have a big apartment complex with folks who are college kids or retired people and families in an apartment complex, big together with everybody there, than have the same-sized parcel developed with three families on it, right? We need to be able to provide options for everyone. There's a ton of other reasons I support the adoption of this modern zoning code, clean air, smarter transit, affordability. It all makes sense to me. As the mayor said, we all love Boise, we love our city, and I'll appreciate, you know, all of this that has gone into rewriting this. And I know I'm out of time, and so I'll see the rest of it. There's lots of people here. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Diana Laciando. Welcome. Did you have a question? I'm sorry.
I'd just like to request that if folks want to have conversations, they go out in the lobby. It's really distracting.
Oh, sure. The, I just had a request that if folks are going to have conversations in the room, please just take advantage of, we've got a really quiet lobby out there behind you or over there, because it does become a distraction for council members. Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. Apparently, I was very excited when the sign-up came out, so I'm first on the list. I do have to get some boys to baseball. But I also feel it's kind of perfect because as a Boise native and now raising my own kids here, I've lived this current zoning code, and I'm very excited about what the promise of what this new zoning code offers. So to just reiterate and share with you, four generations of my family have called Boise home. I actually realized it's five after I submitted my op-ed, so sorry. Great, Amuma, I miss you. In the 1950s, my father grew up in a duplex right next to his grandmother in Boise's North End. That meant they could walk to the old Carnegie Library, they could go to the movies, they could go to the grocery store, what was then the MNW, now the Co-op. However, by the 1980s, when I was growing up in West Boise, and yes, I grew up there before the mall came in, so that's serious street cred, we quite literally were legally prohibited from developing neighborhoods that way. In order for my sister and I to be able to walk any place beyond our neighborhood, we had to cross four lanes of busy traffic on Franklin Road. And then the most exciting place we could go was the Maverick, which is now, I believe, a big smoke, not exactly where you want your kids to be going. So when my parents moved to their home in West Boise, they were promised that neighborhood and regional parks would be developed in just a few years. At the risk of dating myself, that was in 1980. And Molinar Park, that regional park, was not developed until 2017. And you just added a splash pad this year. Good job. And that's not anybody on this dais's fault. The reality is that Boise fell victim to what many communities in the West did, that we kept building out and out and out. And it's very expensive to provide services, parks, police, fire, et cetera. I know that as a citizen, I also know that as a county commissioner, having to figure out how to provide paramedics for some of those developments. So I am supporting this updated zoning code, not only because it protects the quality of life for our neighborhoods and smart stewardship, but it's also a smart and fiscally responsible way for us to grow and provide housing for the people in our community, for our firefighters, for our teachers, for everyday people, for our kids who we want to come back here. We know and have voted multiple times to prevent sprawl up into the foothills. We have an opportunity to continue to protect those areas while growing in a fiscally responsible way. So again, want to reiterate what other folks have said, really appreciate all the work, the outreach, et cetera, that your staff team has done. It's been really commendable. Very excited for the next generation of little Laciando kids to be able to have neighborhoods that are walkable, bikeable, and not go to the big smoke. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we've got Wayne Ritchie, and then Dave Kengas and Katie Fight, will you come on up, because you're next? Welcome, Wayne.
Wayne Ritchie, a 4137 Mountain View. This has got a lot of red flags in it, and the more you look, the more red flags you find. Parking has been my pet peeve forever. According to the 2020 census, 1/4 of 25% have one car or less. 75% of the city has two cars or more. This is ignoring 75% of the city and catering to the 25%. Mr. Keen will tell you, nobody's going to need cars anymore. Everybody's going to ride bicycles. Everybody's going to ride buses. We're going to have these little neighborhoods. I'm 62 years old. I don't ride bicycles to the store. And most of the people here, you know, Jimmy, I hate to be this way, but when you're my age and you've had three in your surgeries, are you going to look back on this day and say, did I watch out for the old people or just my friends that ride bikes? This is a red flag, okay? Anyway, one car per household is ridiculous. That's my red flag. City council districts, we fought a revolutionary war over representation. That's a red flag to a lot of people. Most of you live in the North End. Your lot sizes are smaller, and because of the historical districts, this doesn't apply to your homes. Not in my backyard. That's a huge red flag to a lot of us. Public hearings, the neighborhood associations are furious that it's not allowing public hearings. That's a huge red flag that needs to be addressed. Neighbors for Boise is running an ad campaign. Is this zoning thing so full of red flags that you need to run an ad campaign to sell it to people? If it was worth having, it would sell itself, and it's not. Let's see. The size of some of these homes, apartments, whatever that you're allowing is ridiculous. 70-foot buildings in a neighborhood? That's a, that's not a home. That's an apartment complex. That's not a neighborhood. And let's say you do build a house that big with a dozen homes in it with 12 parking spots. Well, I can tell you right now, everybody knows that's just not practical. So anyway, I have 30 seconds. Finally, let me address the elephant in the room. And this is, I know there's two sides, so people are for this and people are against this, but what it comes down to, is this benefiting the developers or the people that have to live here the rest of their life? Every question that comes up, I want you to ask yourself, am I fighting for the people that live here and call this their home, or am I maximizing developers' profits? It's a big deal, and it's a huge red flag, and it's what we're all watching.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Just for the record, I got my knee replaced this last December, and I'm still riding.
All right. We'll go Katie and then Dave, and then Sarah Skinner and Douglas Drinka, come on up, you're on deck.
Katie Fight, 1006 North Fifth, Boise. I think this zoning code rewrite, upzoning, whatever you want to call it, is a profound mistake. Boise citizens still do not understand what all is involved and what's at stake. When I was walking down to the rally, some of us who were opposed to how this is going down, walking down to that rally, people came up to me and asked me, what's going on with this? They don't, I don't understand it. The city has not communicated what this will do to each neighborhood, and that includes, I live in the North End, that includes to the historical districts, because I agree with everything that Wayne Ritchie said, except it will have a very significant impact on historical districts, on the lots and the homes that are, did not qualify for inclusion in the historic, historical designation. As a biologist, I'm horrified at what this will do to our city's tree canopy, green space, open space, and as just a Boise citizen, what it will do to people's health and sense of well-being, because we are going to lose a tremendous amount of open space opportunities. There's so many studies that should be done before a huge step like this is taken. One is, how much green space do we have now? How much is our city tree canopy and our backyard open space essentially contributing to cooling the city, contributing to mitigating greenhouse gases versus how would that be expected to change 10 and 20 years down the line? That's what any informed city and process should be putting in front of the people, and it should be looked at at a neighborhood by neighborhood level too, I believe. And as a longtime public lands activist, I'm just outraged at any government entity that wants to cut out opportunities for public comment and engagement and understanding of what is happening to, to the environment around us. And that's a huge flaw with this zoning code, that so much would happen behind closed doors down at City Hall with, between developers and city staff. That's not a healthy situation at all. And neighbors won't even have a chance to participate at that level, at much of that level. Instead, people will be left with, all they can do is appeal decisions, spend money on appeals and hire lawyers, and not provide essential information during the process to really get to the heart of the significant issues. And in many of the city council hearings I've attended, after the neighbors testify, have the opportunity to testify, city council makes changes.
Time. Katie, your time. Thank you. All right, Dave, come on up. And then we've got Sarah Skinner, Douglas Drinka, and then Kate Simons and Rob Teederman.
Dave Kengas reside.
I just, Courtney just pointed out to me that I skipped Monica. I'm really sorry. I put a check next to Monica's name, but you didn't speak yet. So after Dave, we'll have Monica.
Okay. Dave Kengas, I reside at 1715 West Canal Street. I am president of Boise Working Together, spokesperson for Reject Boise Upzone, and I'm involved with neighborhood issues with the Vista Neighborhood Association for over 20 years. When they came out with this revised module two last summer, I was completely against it, and I was aghast that the city council had actually moved something like this forward. I could see from the beginning that this was absolutely about production, production in the older parts of Boise that have no CCNRs, no overlay protections, that house the least at-risk people in our populations, seniors, low income. The bench in West Boise provide the lowest, least expensive housing in Boise right now and the lowest available rents. I just do not understand the math, how you can consider redeveloping that and create more affordable affordability out of what is the least expensive already. It just doesn't make any sense to me. I do not see older parts of Boise having the infrastructure to handle this proposed infill. As we went through the Seminage properties, we identified, I believe, it was four different neighborhood projects, five-year work plan, and it was identified now, they're already eight years in the backlog on just neighborhood projects for sidewalks, crosswalks, all of which are going to be badly needed as you increase this infill, and that's not being adequately addressed. Furthermore, I do not believe the incentives are going to provide the affordability that you are looking for. I do not understand that most developers are going to appreciate the city telling them how to build their house with sustainability, which is a more expensive process to put in, and then also turn around and say, we're going to restrict your income as well, when they can just turn around, take a left turn, and build large duplexes like is happening all over in southeast Boise, eight to 12 bedrooms to get their unit count. When I brought this up, I've been told that, well, we can already do duplexes. That's true, but you can't do duplexes on 3,500 square foot lots in R1C, 2,500 square foot lots, four stories high, in R2, or 1,500 square foot lots in R3. So there is, you're going to get the density, but you're not going to achieve the affordability that you're looking for. I do not see how planning and zoning can follow, claim their following to comprehensive plan when you say predictable development. With the incentives, you can go from one single-family home up to 12 units and a multiple amount of combinations in between. When Tim Keen gives presentations, even Andrea gives presentations and are asked numerous questions, they don't have all the answers because how complicated this code is. So you cannot say that you're going to get predictable development when the majority of the people completely don't understand what is being proposed or what can happen. So how can you say you're going to be predictable when you're going into these neighborhoods and you have this wide range of possibilities to develop?
Thank you. We'll go back to Monica. Is Monica here in person or is Monica online?
I'm online.
Oh, great. So sorry about that. Welcome.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Monica Fabi, I live at six three zero South Curtis Road and work at four six nine six West Overland Road at Intermountain Fair Housing Council. I'd like to let the council know that we have also submitted a written comment. And I'm just going to point out a couple of points that I think are of utmost importance. Changes to the condition use permit decision-making process. Criteria four now reads, the proposed use will not create any material negative impacts to uses in the surrounding area or any material negative impacts will be mitigated to the maximum extent practicable. Or the public benefits of, benefits of the proposed use outweighs any material negative impacts of the proposed use that cannot be mitigated. This change eliminates the guardrails necessary for the CUP to condition a use with site-specific mitigation if possible, and if not, to deny the permit. Inserting the public benefit clause here that entirely changes the intent of a CUP and opens the process to vast ambiguity and challenges. Failures, failures of the environmental justice typically rationalize harm done to vulnerable residents and as unpleasant, but necessarily sacrifices for the public good. Indeed, such excuses have been heard to justify the impacts of Blue Valley by altering the essence of the CUP that adverse impacts must be mitigated in order to gain approval. Boise codifies these sacrifices even while giving false assurance that harms will be addressed in the public hearing process. This will undoubtedly have a disparate impact on people who are historically discriminated against the worst low-income people of, people of color and people with disabilities and families with children. It is no coincidence that industrial zoning is already cited in neighborhoods that house the most low-income and people of color and primarily bench neighborhoods and southeast surroundings, Blue Valley exacerbating the history, historical, environmental injustices and disproportionate impacts burdening burdening low-income and/or minority communities in addition to we know that the other states, there would be an environmental regulatory apparatus that would monitor and further regulate these pollutant, polluting industries. But here in Idaho, the legislature has severely limited the jurisdiction of these agencies so that the burden instead falls on municipalities without specific expertise or access to scientific data and who appear to be codifying these disparities. Environmental injustice nationally and locally, there is a strong relationship between discriminatory land use practices and hazardous environmental exposure like physical and chemical hazards, air noise, light pollution, lead, pesticides and mold, superfund sites, landfills and sewage and industrial development, as well as the disproportionate impacts of climate change.
Monica, you've hit time. We do have your comments recorded as well. They were submitted.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for Monica. So the current conditional use test directs the planning, city planners and applicants to look at property in the vicinity and uses in the vicinity, and that's it. It offers no protection for the existing residents of a subject property being developed. And we run into that all the time. For instance, with a nursing home. Nothing in the conditional use permit test permits us to consider the well-being of those vulnerable residents, which you're talking about. Adding the words "public good" adds more protection. It allows us to consider these broader things. And so I don't, I just don't understand your objection, and maybe you can help me understand it because we're broadening.
I think that's the question, right?
Yeah, yeah, I just don't get it. Can you help?
Sure. Thank you for the question. So when you create this, this, this new ordinance, the opportunity for people to come forward and point out what effects this has on them. For example, people who live in residential neighborhoods that are sighted right next to commercial or industrial areas, understanding that those are, they're budding each other and that people live in those places is different than just saying, hey, you've met criteria A, B, and C, and so we're just going to let it go. We're not going to hear anything. We're not going to see any evidence. We don't have any experts on environmental justice or environmental pollution. We're not going to hear any of that. And, and so you've limited the information that you have to make these decisions.
Okay, thanks. I'll look harder at your written comments too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we've got Sarah Skinner, welcome, then Doug Drinka, Kate Simons, Rob Teederman, and Chris Runyon.
Hi, my name is Sarah Skinner. I'm at eleven fifty-three Kimberly. And I want to express my, my support of the rewrite because it provides for greater affordable housing and greater density. And I think that those bring benefits for all of us. I was born here. I grew up in the West End on Twenty-Fifth and Woodlawn. My mom was a single mom. She was a kindergarten teacher at Whittier Elementary. And I grew up with hand-me-downs and we rented out rooms in our house to tenants. And my mom thought about pretty hard before buying anything, even just a Coke. But we could afford housing. Fast forward to when my kids were little, we lived in Carboro, North Carolina, which is a lovely town with very high home prices and sky-high rent. Many of my kids' teachers couldn't afford to live in the district where they taught. Many were driving two or three, from two or three towns away, forty-five minutes each way in the car. As more and more people from all professions had to do this commute, the traffic got worse and worse. People spent more time in their cars, the air pollution increased, and we had days where we had to keep the kids inside because of poor air quality. Then, as the cost of housing continued to grow beyond the reach of the teacher salaries, the schools became unable to recruit staff. So my kids' elementary school had, had difficulty filling teachers and they would start the year with substitutes, including one class where they didn't find a permanent teacher until February. Those kids had rotating substitute teachers until February, and they didn't learn very much. So it wasn't just teachers, though. It was firefighters, police officers, nursing home aides, restaurant workers, sanitation workers. People were just getting priced out. And I want you to think about what that feels like to not be able to live in a town, but still drive there every day to teach their children, to pick up their garbage, to care for their seniors. I moved back to Boise a couple of years ago, and I was shocked by how much housing had increased here. I support the new zoning plan because I want to live in a town where my kids' teachers can be my neighbors. Where the police officer who patrols my street can live on my street. Where the person who picks up my garbage can live down the block. I think we all benefit from having a diversity of housing options and we're having greater density, which then allows us to have public transportation and not spend as much time in our cars. So I encourage you to support the zoning plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Douglas Drinka. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Doug Drinka. I live at thirty-eight oh eight North Hawthorne Drive. At the planning and zoning meeting, we heard the following plan of action. Staff will create a set of metrics to measure the success of the modern code. We'll put the code into place, even if it's not quite perfect. We'll come back a year later, review the metrics and make changes. And we'll continue this iterative process into the future. Iterating like this sounds like an effective way to launch into a large set of changes while minimizing the risk of introducing unintended consequences. But the ability to iterate is limited to a single direction. Granting additional development rights and never having the ability to reduce those rights. Municipalities must tread carefully to avoid triggering a government taking when changing zoning laws. Once an entitlement is offered, it can't just be canceled later. For example, in the current modern code drafts, staff may have liked to require additional affordability or sustainability requirements. They can't just create those requirements. It has to come in the form of new incentives. If a parcel is upzoned, it can't be downzoned by the city. If an incentive is offered, it can't just be removed or modified. For evidence of this, consider the legalese city staff has proposed earlier this month to add to section eleven oh one oh nine. The enactment of this code shall not terminate or otherwise affect rights acquired or authorized under prior code. Presumably similar stipulations will be added to any future changes to the modern code. We have to get this right the first time. In the proposed draft, city staff have tried to strike a balance between the pace of development and the right kinds of development using incentives. Last year, city staff had a low level of confidence that the incentives would even be widely utilized. This year, the housing market looks completely different. The chances the balance struck now will be viable for the next twenty years is minuscule. There's no way to adjust the balance towards more affordability or more sustainability in the future. We'll have sold the farm. We can never say, if you want twelve units per acre in R1C, you'll need half of those to be affordable. Instead, forever, twelve units will be allowed. What does it look like to move slowly? Don't give up density or parking reductions for free. Leave room to incentivize what you want to see happen in the market. New rights can always be added in the future, but they can never be taken away. I see you have just a little more time, and I want to think a little bit about this idea of measuring the impact of these changes. Currently, the planning department database and the building permit database aren't connected. This means there's no way to report on a project from administrative approval all the way to an occupancy permit. We need to get that fixed. We need public reporting and dashboarding on the use of incentives. We need a way to measure the impact of development on existing neighborhoods. Home sale prices aren't public record in Idaho, but they're often reported to realty companies in the county. The city should have access to those. We should be funding studies that track the balance of affordability, sustainable development, and neighborhood stability. If we analyze the data and make well-reasoned predictions for the future, it will be easy to know whether twelve units or eight units or fifteen units belong on an R1C parcel. How many of these should be income restricted?
Thank you, Doug. Kate.
Madam Mayor, Council.
Welcome.
To the planning staff as well, I want to begin by thanking you for the time and for the outreach that you've done. It seems to be unprecedented as far as I can tell. So thank you in advance for educating all of us. My name is Kate Simons. I live in the downtown neighborhood on Fourteenth and Idaho. I'm proud to have been born and raised here. And after leaving to get my undergraduate degree and going on to live in various cities across the West and the world, the city of Boise remains my favorite place that I have ever lived. And it's true that Boise is not the same city it was when I was born in the nineties. And it's certainly not the same city it was sixty years ago when this code was developed. Boise has grown, and Boise is growing because Boise is great. Ignoring this growth is a choice that has failed countless cities before us. So I'm here today to encourage directly addressing that growth deliberately. And I testify with, with emphatic support for the modern zoning code. I work in economic development and spend much of my time assessing, evaluating growth and analyzing how communities and businesses are impacted. In this work, I have witnessed a handful of relevant trends I'd like to share. First and foremost, city sprawl is somewhat of an economic black hole. It's bad for communities, to summarize Commissioner Lashando. It's much bigger than the traffic conversation that takes up a lot of the airtime. Notably, it threatens our agricultural lands, which take up and contribute eighteen percent of our state's economic output. It also threatens our ability to have clean potable water. It stretches and dilutes the city's ability to provide infrastructure, public services, and first responders to its citizens. When these services are stretched, as we know, property taxes increase. I could go on and on, but you have all heard these truths already. My point is that ignoring growth or allowing this deliberate attempt to antiquate Boise is not only fiscally irresponsible, it is the theft of future residents getting to enjoy the greatness that I got as a kid and that I have now. And while I can continue making this point that sprawl is bad, I would rather make the point that density is good. I know this. I'm a renter in downtown Boise, arguably the community that will be affected most by this new zoning code. In my mixed-use multifamily apartment building on Fourteenth, my next-door neighbor is a cafe. On my block, my other neighbors are a dairy farm, an auto shop, and an outdoors outfitter. My dreamy two-block walk to work is so short that it does not even register on Strava. I use my car as little as possible. I bike everywhere I can, including to meetings to our newly-formed Downtown Boise Association, if anyone would like to join, and to visit my family in the East End. And I feel more connected to my community than I ever have. This code would allow and expand access to those economic benefits and to the lifestyle I feel so privileged to enjoy, not just for existing residents, but to the lucky citizens of our city's future. So I'm in full support and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kate, and welcome home. Rob Teederman.
Good afternoon, Mayor McClaney and Council. Thank you for giving me a time and a place to offer public testimony. My name is Rob Teederman. I live and work at two seventeen North Walnut Street in beautiful Boise, Idaho. In the past, I've spoken as a resident, invested with both head and heart in the health and happiness of Boise. Today, I speak as president of the Board of Directors of the Boise River Enhancement Network Incorporated. A five oh one C three committed to conservation and one of your partners for the past ten years with both public works and parks and recreation departments. At the city of Boise Planning and Zoning Commission hearings, there was much discussion about parking, housing densities, building heights, and participation in the public process. Today, instead, I wish to speak for the Boise River. I wish to speak for the trees. Because you have read testimony by the public.
I was just about to ask the same thing. Weekend, it's super distracting. Rob, will you pause just for a second? I think we've got somebody else's presentation that's being pulled up. I don't think it's yours. Is there a way to not share that screen with us? Okay, great. Oh, perfect. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Is that what you were asking? Okay.
Because you have read testimony provided by the public, I know you've seen my two letters related to the drafts, the Boise zoning code rewrite dated March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. With that testimony, I took you deep into the weeds of the intent, the purpose, and the language of the Boise River System Ordinance. Today, I wish to take a step back and give you perspective. I am a restoration ecologist. My work is largely to put back together the pieces and parts of broken natural landscapes, especially rivers and their floodplains. I'm also one of the principal authors of the Boise River System Ordinance, written over a period of eighteen months and adopted as ordinance in nineteen ninety-three. It is a durable document that remains useful to present time. The people of Boise, like Vicky Paulson from the League of Women Voters, Barbara Sparrow from the Southeast Neighborhood Association, and Carl Gebhardt, a civil engineer, advocated for passage of this ordinance at public hearings. It was praised by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, touted by then-Mayor Kemp Thorne, and because of its requirement for a two-hundred-foot setback from the waterline of the river at a flow of six thousand five hundred cubic feet per second, largely responsible for the corridors of open space at Spring Meadow Phase One and Two and the Wood Duck Island subdivisions and the Harris Ranch community. My purpose in speaking with you today is to ask you to ensure that the intent, purpose, and language of the original ordinance is faithfully transposed into the city of Boise zoning code rewrite. We are grateful to staff for referencing the original ordinance in the staff, in the draft rewrite. However, we have yet to be invited to sit down with staff to be assured the amendments mentioned in my two letters of testimony have been recognized. We believe this is, this is important to make the language of the rewrite current and part of a modern zoning code for the city of trees. I'm available at your convenience to answer questions related to the intent of the original ordinance and eager to answer technical questions related to public health and safety and the ecology of the river.
Time.
On behalf.
Good time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris? And then Richard, well in, Ryan McGoldrick, will you all just head towards the front, please? And Andrew, not sure if it's Cumic, Chumic, Chumic? Come on up.
I have a slide I'd like to share.
Yep, I think she was pulling it up last time.
Can I give a handout?
Is that the slide?
Well, it's very, yeah, it's essentially the slide. I just want to make sure you have a copy of it.
Yeah, why don't, Richard, do you have a slideshow? Why don't you come up while we're trying to get the slideshow up? We've got ninety-eight folks today, so that's why I'm asking people to come up to the front and because I did the math, even if I don't, if I don't give us bathroom breaks for here till seven. So that's why I'm asking everybody to come on up ahead. So, Richard, go ahead. And then, once I know that the slideshow is good, we'll have you come on up, Chris, but otherwise I'll go through folks.
Richard Luellin, ninety-one seventy Hill Road. I want to tell you the reason I'm wearing my Reject Boise Upzone T-shirt today. Troubled by the attack on the public process that is core to the zoning code rewrite. I'm troubled by the attack on the public process that is core to the zoning code rewrite. This attack follows a nationwide trend in the wake of the housing affordability crisis. Blame locals, even though any objective assessment shows that the real cause has been the market reaction to the housing crash a dozen years ago and resulting fiscal policy. Here we have a double blow to local input. First, the rewrite in itself represents more than 100,000 rezoned parcels, each of which would require a public hearing today. And second, in the future, many public hearings will be replaced by administrative decisions. Perhaps in big cities or some eastern towns where every rezone requires a public vote, influential locals have slowed construction. But what evidence do we have here in Boise that residents are the problem? Yesterday, we heard from city staff that public hearings require applicants to hire attorneys. But how often does that really happen? Even in my fired-up northwest neighborhood, I believe it has happened only once in the last six years, even as the city has approved 900 new units, almost all of them multifamily or townhouses. These are some of the data we need. How frequently are applications that would have hearings but had no opposition and were approved by consent? By consent? How many hundreds or thousands of housing units of various types have been approved for rezones, variances, and conditional use permits and have been constructed, constructed but sitting empty, or not constructed in the last decade? How many housing units have been denied after a public hearing by each neighborhood? That's a very small number. As a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee, I asked for these data numerous times, but they were never made available. When we have left decisions to administrators, the least powerful pay the price. In 2018, the Boise Planning Director waived the requirement for the developer of a 99-bay trucking terminal with the Blue Valley manufactured home community, even though it would have resulted in constantly idling diesel trucks 150 feet from their doors. Yes, the history of zoning is tainted with classism and racism. But the ongoing story shows that as less powerful residents start to organize using the existing laws of the land, those laws, which have served the powerful well, now must be abandoned. You will hear this other story if you listen to those fighting displacement from their neighborhoods in cities across the country. Locals aren't always right, but often we are the ones that have or gain an understanding of the real impacts to projects. Sometimes we end up saving the day. Ada County, for example, only lost $5 million on the dynamist waste incinerator because locals dug deep and stopped it. Real communication is an organic process that has its own timeline. Despite planning staff's real efforts to get feedback, it cannot be forced. It's really just now that's beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Madam Mayor.
Are we ready? Oh, Richard, there's a question. Councilmember has a question.
Yes. Richard, I'm interested in your opinion as member of the Citizens Advisory Committee. What would you have liked to see? I understand that there's some types of developments that we want to have an administrative review. One of those examples is like if I want to rent out a basement apartment, and I'm not increasing the square footage of my property, why would I irritate my neighbors? So that's one example. But I'm more interested in what would you like to see as part of the public notification process that isn't in here? What's something actionable we can take into consideration when we're considering the notice requirements?
You know, the notice, thank you for the question. I think the notice requirements in of themselves are a little bit of a red herring because if you are noticed, but you don't have a hearing, or there's really no chance for you to have input in the process, other than perhaps to appeal, so, you know, there is that. But I think, from my perspective, it's not so much notification, but it's the chance to come down and speak to, you know, elected officials when it's a big project. And I really do think that the process pretty much shows that it's the big projects, it's only some projects that have any public opposition whatsoever. Many, many things go on consent agenda. And at the very least, I think we should have those data that show us the frequency of these different, of the results of the public hearing process now, before we make such radical decisions to, you know, really truncate the public process. So I can't, I'm sorry, I'm not giving you very specific detailed alterations, but what I would say is we should essentially keep the hearing process as we have it now. Gather those data, and then if we really need to change it, then go ahead. But even in the, even if we don't change the public process, right, we are still no longer going to have public hearings on all of the parcels that will essentially be upzoned or granted more entitlements by this process. So the onus, in my opinion, is to recapture some of that public input. And that could be done, again, if we really look closely at our neighborhood plans or go out and look, you know, detailed in different neighborhoods that don't typically get a lot of input, don't typically have a lot of participation. Just make sure that we're not missing things. I had a conversation with Councilmember Ali Burton, and he corrected me, actually. In my neighborhood, the irrigation lateral 30, number 34, the pathway along there is in the pathways master plan. But it's not exactly the same, so I missed it because it didn't connect as far. But really, on a, we need to get it right neighborhood by neighborhood. Because after this goes through, that 100,000 parcels are going to have new entitlements. It's going to be difficult to claw them back. So that's, I guess, my main concern.
So if there are certain types of developments that you would like a public, more public process for, could you prioritize those? What specific developments are most critical to you to have a more public process?
And, Richard, I'm going to ask it and answer the question.
Thank you. It's, I think you have to listen to the people on that because it really is contextual. It's really site-specific. So to me, it's not multifamily versus single-family or anything else. It's just, do the people who live nearby, what are their concerns? So I can't answer it other than listen to the locals.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Is the slideshow ready? All right, Chris, come on up.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor and City Council members, for listening to my concerns about the proposed code. My name is Chris Runyon. I live at 606 Brookdale Drive. Like my testimony during planning and zoning, where I presented similar data, I want to publicly state that you should not, you should not vote to approve this code due to the city's failure to provide its residents with an accurate description of the impacts to public welfare by lowering the minimum lot size in R1C. R1C accounts for 58% of residential zoned areas in Boise, so this has a massive impact on the welfare of your voters. As you heard yesterday, the code amendment process is being justified because it provides for general welfare. But did it adequately disclose the impacts to the general welfare for those currently living here? The city has stated the ZCR will provide dependable building patterns. So what has the public been told to expect? The City of Boise's website states the new code protects the character we love, protects the character of our unique neighborhoods. Boise Blueprint calls for stable neighborhoods. Mr. Keen has stated it proposes increases in density that are very appropriate to Boise. This isn't dramatic changes. If this is what the city council and average Boise resident has heard, then we can assume that reducing the lot size will essentially have no noticeable impact. But is this accurate? Unlike proposing to allow a neighborhood cafe that serves alcohol, the average Boisean has no way to understand what reducing the lot size means and must rely on the city who is proposing it. So far, just as mentioned earlier, the city has told the public to expect very little, if any, change. But does that, does the data show that? Remember, for every lot that could now be split, the allowed density doubles. In my neighborhood of 226 homes, the total number of lots goes from 14 to 94%, an almost 600% increase. In the south-end neighborhood of 404 homes, it goes from 13 to 97. I'm showing the picture of that right there. I've looked at almost 4,000 parcels so far using Ada County Assessor GIS map, and these results can be reasonably assumed. I have almost 15 years of experience using GIS software, and I stand behind these results. If one were to scale this out across the city, we are talking about massive changes in the number of lots that could be split. This change will impact welfare of those currently living in those neighborhoods, either through increased displacement from demolition or increased rents, property values, or property taxes. You, the city council, have a fiduciary responsibility to your constituents to require that the city discloses this data to the public prior to casting your vote. Doing so beforehand would be unethical and knowingly perpetuate the inaccurate description from the city. I thank you for your time, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you. All right, Ryan McGoldrick. And then Andrew. And then after Andrew, Ben Burnham and Robert Frazier. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ryan McGoldrick, and I am here on behalf of Conservation Voters for Idaho in support of the proposed modern zoning code. First, I want to start by thanking the mayor, city council, and all of their staff, all the staff for all the work you've done to put this together, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. I know this has been a lot of work to put this together. City Council President Woodings asked an important question yesterday about the community input. So I just wanted to note and share that before developing this testimony today, CVI knocked on 2,250 doors to share information about the zoning code and get direct feedback from local residents. Later today, you will hear specific stories from some of my colleagues who went around and knocked on doors and attended community events. We found that regardless of if folks supported or opposed the rewrite, the one thing that they had in common was their values. Boise residents wanted homes that they can afford. Boise residents wanted walkable communities with trees and access to parks and open spaces. And Boise residents wanted to ensure that we are using our resources efficiently, whether that resource is land, water, or energy. I think you'll hear kind of those same values reflected throughout the testimony tonight. We believe that this zoning code delivers on those values. That's why this week we submitted a joint letter of support for the rewrite from Conservation Voters for Idaho, Catch, Idaho Conservation League, Neighbors for Boise, Idaho Chapter Sierra Club, the Boise Bicycle Project Board of Directors, Idaho Walk-Bike Alliance, the Golden Eagle Autobahn Society, and the Canals Connect Community Coalition. We are all organizations that work in housing, transportation, open space, climate, and conservation. And we support the proposed rewrite because it matches our values and the values of our members. That letter is public record, so I won't go into any more detail. You can read through our specific provisions. We've got two pages of the specific things that we support. So I don't want to repeat all those today. Instead, I want to address a point that I've heard from the opposition, especially at the rally and some other places. A lot of questions, people asking, what's the rush, and why don't we slow this process down? So first, I want to point out, I don't think that's a question you're ever going to hear from renters, from families who can't afford their first starter home, from recent Boise and Boise State graduates who can't afford to stay in our city, and those who realize the importance of taking action on climate change right now. I think all those people understand why this is a priority to get this done and why we're so intent on making this a priority for the city. Secondly, I want to point out that I don't think the city has rushed on this. By my count, the average citizen has had 50 opportunities. As of tomorrow will be the 50th opportunity that Boise residents have to give their input on this process. And that's not counting the mailers who went out to residents, flyers at every library, city building, community event, or the Citizen Advisory Committee. I know that city staff haven't talked to every single resident in the city, but I know they've at least tried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I have a question for Ryan. Thanks for your testimony. I'm curious, I know you were here when Idaho Power presented. Would CVI oppose Idaho Power's proposal or suggestion?
Thank you, Councilmember Willetts and Mayor McLean. I haven't looked at their direct comments, but I think that it sounds like a reasonable request on initial review, but I'd want to see it more before giving any formal opinion on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Andrew, come on up. And then Ben Burnham? He's been online. Oh, you're there. Sorry, I didn't see you. And then Robert Frazier. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Andrew Chimmich, and I live at 1500 North 10th Street, Apartment 4. And tonight I'm speaking in strong support of the updated zoning code. I'm fortunate enough to live in a neighborhood built long before the existing code. There are few obvious signs of this just in my block. For one, there's a commercial business, a yoga studio nestled between my apartment building and the single-family homes on the other side. It's even more obvious when you count the number of parking spaces. On the block, there are 11 single-family homes, 12 apartment units, and the yoga studio. Yet for that entire area, there are only 17 dedicated parking spaces. This sort of arrangement is illegal under the current code, and many blocks in the neighborhood can boast similar numbers. Yet somehow, the neighborhood thrives. It is such a success that despite the median income being well below the city average, it holds a reputation of being a wealthy neighborhood. In my view, this success is not in spite of the lack of parking, but because of it. With more space dedicated to people, small businesses thrive, children play safely, and residents are free to choose from a variety of transportation options. It allows people like me and many of my neighbors to live without a car at all. It's exciting to see that the city seems to recognize the wisdom built into our older neighborhoods. It's incorporating these lessons into the modern zoning code. Though I wish we would eliminate parking mandates altogether, the reductions are a step in the right direction. Allowing commercial uses within residential areas will build a stronger economy in neighborhoods that don't need to widen their roads to accommodate density. Smaller lot sizes and easier lot splits will allow density to spread throughout the entire city, rather than being concentrated downtown and just along major roadways. The new code also acknowledges that housing affordability isn't just about the cost of rent, but also the other associated living expenses. With the average cost of car ownership in Idaho being $500 per month, affordability also means building a city that reduces the number of cars your family needs to live a good and meaningful life. But the city is also clear that the approach to affordability goes beyond just this code. As Director Keen mentioned in the Planning and Zoting meeting, the private market generally cannot produce new housing for those making below 80% AMI. For these residents, the city must subsidize their rent or risk pushing them into homelessness. The city has shown a willingness to do this by directly purchasing units and creating the Housing Land Trust subsidized private development. Along with the adoption of this new code, I hope to see these efforts expanded. The city and its neighbors should be built with the expectation of change. A neighborhood that is unable to grow and transform without significantly harming its residents is a fragile one. And that is exactly what the existing code has been building for the past few generations. The new code, I hope, will send us in a different direction, one where we don't fear growth, but we see it as an opportunity to strengthen what we already have. Thank you.
Next up, Ben. Then Robert Frazier. Online, great.
Hey, Alvin.
I just said, welcome.
Thank you. Ben Burnham, 4305 West Fairmont Street. I have a little slideshow so I can put my thoughts, because I get very nervous. And so my point today is to chat with you briefly about why I support the modern zoning code. So my purpose and why in my testimony today are these four key components. I'm on my neighborhood association. I'm not speaking on behalf of them. Some wonderful people there, but I do think that this change, having earlier neighborhood participation, is a big deal. A lot of times, I live in an area of the bench that's had several developments in the last couple of years, and people can feel that they're getting to these meetings after everything's been decided, and that's not a good feeling. And so I like that there's earlier neighborhood participation. However, I also really like that there is faster project approval so that things can get done. Not everything needs to have a large-scale meeting like these were. To some of these examples that were provided earlier, those are some very hostile meetings that there's not a lot of constructive feedback being provided. It's folks that are against it. I also really appreciate those that have been asking about how the neighborhoods that spoke yesterday reached out to their citizens. It's a lot to ask, especially for some of these smaller neighborhoods that don't necessarily have the professional organization like places like the North or East End. And so I think anything the city can do to help with that is a great way to move forward, too. The second piece is low-wage workers and housing. I am fortunate to supervise folks that work in the trades, folks that are directly out of college. The worst thing that I get when trying to recruit someone to where I work is the housing discussion, along with wages that have not kept up with housing. And so my hope here is that folks can afford to live where they work. We hear a lot about congestion. We don't want to turn ourselves into some of those West Coast cities. Well, the easiest way to do that is to allow for folks to live where they work, to bike, to do those things. Not everyone has to ride a bike, contrary to earlier testimony. However, if several people do, that takes several cars off the road, and that's where we win. I'd like to plan for the next 30 years, not the last 30 years. So my hope is that we can continue to move forward in a way that we're able to react to the lived reality of the future, not what we've done the last 30 years, which in planning doesn't seem like something that anyone wants to repeat. And then it also creates sustainable neighborhoods. So again, you hear the 15-minute neighborhood. I know that's become a buzzword in a bad way for some folks, but I think that's a really cool thing to have in this town. There's a lot of places where you can't necessarily walk or bike safely to get there, and I hope we can change that. And then real briefly, I have a couple pictures. I'm not sure how it'll show up, but my hope with this one is to my hope with this one is to show that likely voters tend to back housing. That is something that has changed drastically because we have a housing crisis, especially among young people. However, those that show up to these meetings tend to be older homeowners. The other thing is it works. So the cities who have built more housing have lowered the cost of housing, which I think is very important, because that was something I heard in the first round as well. And then I also think it's the more conservative thing to do. We have to play to where we live, which is Idaho, which is conservative, and this takes the government out specifically around parking minimums. I think that's an area that we can improve. Thank you.
Thank you.
What's your trade?
What's that?
What's your trade, sir?
I work in recreation.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Frazier, Robert Frazier, we see you. Welcome.
Hello there. I just want to say thank you to the mayor and her administration for the political capital that you've spent to pursue this work. It is vital and thankful for it. My name's Robert Frazier. I live at 3613 North Cubarton Lane, and I'm a faith leader at Redemption Hill, who's passionate about housing as an issue in our city. I'm one of 18 faith leaders who have signed on in support of this zoning code rewrite. Unfortunately, some want to protect their neighborhoods from change without any concern for our kids and those who cannot afford to find any place to live. We have to think about the most vulnerable by considering that there are over 4,000 school-aged children in our valley who do not have permanent housing. They're couch surfing, living in cars and having to move schools as they're forced to move addresses. My four children are fifth-generation Boise residents. Our family's been in the city since the early 1940s. I believe that this rewrite is a good start to protecting the private property rights of homeowners who wish to use their homes to create housing. My grandparents bought their new home, their new home near Winston Park in 1952 for $25,000. 30 years later, my parents built the house I grew up in in Maple Grove in Eustick for $50,000. It doubled in 30 years. We purchased a 60-year-old home in the same neighborhood, the Westmoreland neighborhood, in 2016 for $250,000. That is five times the payment in 36 years. And just seven years later, it's over-doubled in price to $600,000. At that pace of increasing value, my nine-year-old is going to need $4 to $5 million to stay on the West Bench. We need more housing, less red tape, and simpler processes for developing infill projects with higher density, lower parking requirements, and human-sized, walkable neighborhoods with mixed-use development, not held back by neighbors who just don't want any change in our city. Our team of housing advocates that has worked at How'sYourNeighbor.org to help everyday people to participate in housing and solving our housing problems, we're hoping that this will be passed and it'll help average people to use their underutilized properties for creating homes for kids in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. What, um, what congregation did you say you led? I didn't catch it.
I'm at Redemption Hill, is the name.
Great, thank you for your service.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I just want to relay a thank you to Robert and his church. They're very active in our Neighbors United, um, collective impact group. So thanks for your work with Refugee Resettlement.
Yep.
All right, now we have Grant Walden. Online, maybe? Um, Gary Zimmerman, Brent Coles, and John Coggins. Come on up, if any of you are here in person. Do we have online? Okay, um, Miss. Brent, why don't you come on up? Sure. And then, sir, are you John, Gary, or Grant? Great, thanks.
My name is Brent Coles. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I live at 6780 Casa Real, Boise, Idaho. Uh, I came here today to listen to the discussion, to get some more information, and to hopefully formulate an opinion or give some ideas. I appreciate the testimony that I've heard so far on both sides of this issue. If this zoning ordinance will do all the things that, uh, it sounds like it'll do, affordable housing and walkable neighborhoods, then all for it. Um, some skepticism, we've heard, do you have the data? Has there been other cities who have adopted this type of ordinance? And have we seen the results of affordable housing? That is a key issue in our community. I'm all for it. I have children, grandchildren. I want them to have affordable housing, but do you have the database? Can you show that by increasing the density and allowing for three or four or five units on what currently you would have a single-family home, will those units be more affordable, or will they just be expensive apartments or expensive condominiums? I don't know. I don't know if you have that data, but I would search for it before you pass this ordinance. As has been stated, uh, once you give that entitlement, you can't take it back. It's very expensive to take back. Uh, we found that in the foothills. When the policy for the city was to build an enclosed mall in downtown, then developers went into the foothills because downtown needed to be the center of retail. So they went into the foothills. They bought properties. They had entitlements. So as, uh, Mayor Kemp Thorne did a great, or excuse me, yes, Mayor McLean, thank you. She did a great job in heading up that grassroots effort to pass a bond so that we could go up into the foothills and buy those properties. But it was because there was already entitlements up there that we had to go up and buy those properties. Don't entitle properties throughout our community, sounds like thousands of lots, until you know for sure you will be able to provide affordable housing. No one wants you to take more time. As has been stated, let's do it. Let's do it right. But please, do it right. Make sure you have the data. Look for other communities that have done this. Did it work for them? When the policy for Boise was to have a mall, an enclosed mall in downtown, they were going to tear down eight square blocks of historic buildings where currently we get to go and have shopping and restaurants. That was a policy that Salem, Oregon had adopted. Salt Lake City had adopted that. Uh, other communities across the United States, Long Beach, a city where I worked for a couple of years, they had adopted that policy. It was a failed policy, but they thought it was going to be great. They were going to attract uh, customers and retail and a vibrant downtown. It didn't work for them. So we opposed that policy. We changed it. And as a city now, we have a beautiful downtown. Make sure you do this right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Gary Zimmerman. Are the slides ready? Perfect. Great. And then we'll go with John Coggins, Greg Ostrow, and Grant Walden, if Grant is here.
Can you hear me good? Okay.
Yes, thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Um, so, uh, thank you, Mayor McLean and council for giving me the opportunity, uh, to speak here today. My name is Gary Zerman. I live on Plum Street in Boise. The new code, the new code fails to fairly create low-income housing across Boise. One major injustice is the double-up zone, which rezones property along State Vista and Fairview to R2, and then further up zones are too to be much more permissive. This presents several issues. No legally required notification of rezone was made, and the double-up zone is inconsistently implemented with nearly 20% of the double-up zone properties not within the eighth of a mile. Additionally, R1C homes that have been double-up zoned to R2 lack the protection against tall buildings and new incompatible uses. But most importantly, the double-up zone is no longer needed for the affordability. Um, the city's recently posted user guides show scenarios of what the ZCR rules allow, but these scenarios downplay true impact. You'll see no examples of M3 abutting R2 since MX is supposed to be transitioned down by R2. That's surprising. The R2 guide fails to show any four-story or 45-foot-high buildings, and the most intense scenario shown, which is in the R1C guide, is rear-to-rear development, not side-to-side. None of the user guide scenarios show the full impact of an R1C single-story home being double-up zoned to R2 and no longer having any neighborhood transition protections. But if we look at the full impact at the bottom, it's a real wake-up call. Imagine on one side having a sheer 70-foot-high building, five feet away from your single-level home. Imagine that. And then on the other side, you could potentially have a blocky 45-foot-high, you know, building of different uses. And considering what those uses are, you could have things like a large group home of unlimited density, mental health rehab, halfway house, boarding house, transit facility, mortuary. This is an R1C neighborhood. Those aren't compatible. It's simply too intense. But most importantly, it's not needed anymore. Your push last year to make the code more aggressive gave you an R1C that meets the affordability needs without needing R2 intensity. A recent Sightline study of Portland revealed the best approach to low-income housing is to avoid demolition and everything that that entails. For example, building triplexes and fourplexes that require demolition resulted in rents of $2,500 to $3,200 a month. But simpler options are much cheaper and much more readily available, and they're available in R1C duplex conversions, infill duplexes, cohousing, ADUs, tiny homes, and put them on wheels too, please. Moreover, R1C allows plexes, multifamily, with more incentives than in R2.
Gary, um, you hit time.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you very much. Okay. Oh, hi. Hi, Greg, come on up. Of course not. Come on up. The, and Grant? Have we found Grant? All right. Um, then we'll go with John Coggins, George Holland, Holland, sorry, Denise Zimmerman, Don Essek, and Marcia Rojas.
Hi.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Greg Ostrow. I live at 201 East Luisa Street in Boise, Idaho. It's been a long 10 months. Um, after 200-plus hours of graphics and modeling, I'm tired, okay? But I'm tired today of talking about this size or that size, or this high or that low, or this many parking spaces or that many parking spaces. This is what I'm tired of. This should not be a NIMBY versus YIMBY. This should not be red versus blue. This should not be you versus me. When I hear and listen to people and I hear this division, it creates anxiety for me. We did something wrong. Lack of process, lack of education, lack of something. And that's not what we're about. This is about a community getting together and solving a problem as a village, not one person's way or another person's way. I think I sent 100 pages of documents. I've even sent it to you. You sat in a meeting that I sent in. You know, and all the time I was there saying, yeah, this is okay, but there's some things I think we can do better, this and that. I got stonewalled. I like to say it like my brother said to me. I was down in San Diego. He tapped me out. I'm going to leave in a minute, a second. Okay, Greg, you're a baby boomer. They're not going to listen to you. And I said, okay. So when you go back and you think about this, I know this is going to be approved. I'm not an idiot. Just think about why we have this sort of discussions and people. The other thing is the study guide that I just saw up on the screen, I've never seen that. When was that? When did that come available? I don't even think it's right. So and that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. Here I am, an architect. You've seen my drawings. You've seen my graphs. You've seen my sketches. You know, and then something comes out on a guide and I don't even see it. I mean, it, it happens, but I want to thank you. Good luck. God bless you. It'll all work out in the end.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Greg. Greg, you've got a question from the council president.
Um, I don't have a question for Greg. I just wanted to clarify that that study guide was provided by somebody who was giving testimony. It wasn't part of the official, no, it was not. I'm sorry, I can't give, um, citizens' direction to do that.
Okay, John Coggins. George, come on up. And then Denise, is Denise Zimmerman? Don Essek, Marcia Rojas. We've got lots of seats here on deck for you. Welcome.
How's everyone doing?
Good.
Uh, George Holland, I live.
Is there something going on with the mic? Um, Greg went in and out. There you go.
Um, I live currently at Beech and Bond Street. Last time I testified, I was at 4705 Denton. Uh, during the PNZ testimony, I had about five or six applications out for a place to live. None of them lined up, and I'm lucky to have friends that I can live in their ADU in their backyard. So I'm a huge proponent for more ADUs, because sometimes your friends don't want to make money off of you. They just want to give you a place to live. So I'd like to make the joke to make light of it. I'm homeless. I'm just experiencing other people's homes right now. But in actuality, I, I really think that this all boils down to the nature of change and disruption. It's the only thing we're ever going to be dealing with ever. And I think of a dangerous way to approach change and the anticipated growing change here is to keep using the document that we've had over the last 60 years. You don't really hear anyone standing up here saying, "I love the old code and the result of it so much that I want to reject the new code." Um, and so, uh, the next thing I'd like to say, is regarding the incentives, for affordability, I think the way our whole entire economy and country looks at affordability is really myopic, and we have a way to do it a little differently this time. Um, a percentage of AMI is a really good starting set, but if you look at a lot of places around the country, it just produces big boxes with a bunch of really small boxes inside of them. And then you get a bunch of people living in those that don't like living in boxes so much that they try to get out of them quickly. Um, so I would like to see the suite of incentives opened wide open, because then private developers can actually deliver more units. The one I stick to, and I don't know if it's legal or not, is if someone was willing to have three-year leases and X percent of their building, then they get more height, or they get more density, or they get whatever. Because the goal is to have more units, not units that we'd love to have but don't pencil, because affordability is really hard for the private market to deliver. Um, and then the last thing I'd say is, you know, a lot of people come, are probably going to come up here and say, "This isn't a democratic process. Wait for the elections." I can't think of a more short-term oriented conversation to delay the next 50 years of our city's development for political things in the short run. That to me is a really scary thought, because it's what we see all over our country, and it's like, why would we do it here? And then there was one more. Shoot. Can't remember it. I guess that's all I got.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, I think that, did you say that we should explore ways to incentivize longer leases?
Yes.
Okay.
I imagine that you're on deck. You're on deck. Come on up. Are you Marcia?
Denise.
Oh, Denise Zimmerman. Great. Thanks.
Okay, Denise Zimmerman, 4375 Plum Street. The ZCR Committee was formed in 2019. The team was led by Darren Fluke. Darren wanted to get people educated and comfortable with the committee was trying to do before adopting the ordinance. At that time, it was believed it would take 30 months for outreach and design and six years to finish. 2020, McLean becomes premier. Darren Fluke resigns and McLean takes over and creates a new ZCR committee. She hires outside consultant Clarion Associates for two years. It appears that you thought that by starting over, you would only need two years to finish the ZCR instead of six. I wonder what got dropped out of the original timeline, probably all the outreach to educate people and make us comfortable with zoning and the rewrite goals. And of course, you didn't want to miss out on the rapid population increase and revenue growth you were seeing. You were going to rush the process. When rushing something as difficult as a city zoning code rewrite, you're going to miss things. On purpose, because you don't have the time to do it right. A few things that could have been better, but were probably dropped for lack of time. The documents. It was difficult to figure out what the team was trying to convey. We needed differences documents showing what had changed and where to find it. We needed an edible document we could use to search the code. 611 pages cannot be reviewed in a couple hours at the library. We all needed a hard copy of the document. Early in the process, after the first document release, we should have been given training on the document format. With these changes, the community could provide quicker, more pertinent input. The document was rushed, and so were the details of the upzone. In your haste to get something done quickly, the goals of the upzone were missed. The upzone won't give you the affordable units needed. It won't give you a best-in-class transit system. That there needs to be a good transit system designed with money behind it before you start developing a mass of homes along already-packed roads. The upzone won't provide a path to homeownership. The American dream is still to own your own home. The upzone would continue to segregate the haves from the have-nots, allowing small lots and large buildings in specific areas rather than equitably, equitably throughout the entire city, including R1A. Please deny this upzone until you have a plan that is not rushed. Fix the. Fix the documents, make them available, and come up with a better plan to provide affordability. Fix the zoning districts to make them more equitable throughout the city. Don't ask us to wait for a working transit system if you can't wait for more informed community input. Your jobs are at stake.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'm not vocalizing disagreement with anything that was said, but for folks who are interested in knowing what was done with some of the outreach in two thousand and nineteen during the Beeter administration that was covered in yesterday's meeting on how that sort of informed the next steps in the process. So there's an ability to go back and look at yesterday's meeting and actually see what was done with some of the two thousand and nineteen outreach and research.
Don, come on up. Welcome. And so then we've got Marcia Rojas, Charlie Woodruff, Jackie Davidson, and Patricia Nelson next.
Good afternoon.
Sorry, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on your consideration of Boise zoning code rewrite. My name's Don Stig. I reside in Boise at six one five East Crestline Drive since nineteen ninety-five. The rewrite is not perfect. I don't expect it would ever be perfect, but it's a huge improvement. It's an important step forward that we need to take now. So I stand here before you, asking you to adopt this zoning code rewrite now, not to wait, but I do so with one condition. I ask that you commit to revisiting the code in one year's time to assess its effectiveness and meeting the goals that were outlined yesterday and revise it as necessary. I did submit comments online addressing a couple imperfections, and you can read those. Rather than repeat myself, I want to tell you a little story. Made up story. A young couple has just moved to Boise. They both are fortunate to have very good paying jobs, so they can afford a home here. So they look around Boise. They find a new development, pick out a home they can afford. And what it's more, the development promises a neighborhood park, a playground, a soccer field, and trails connecting with open space and adjacent neighborhoods. They go great. They buy. They soon start a family. Kids grow up. They go to grade school, then the high school, then off to college. Twenty-some years later, they have never had a chance to use that park or enjoy the trails because it's never been built. You see, the development was never considered to be finished. The developer was never obligated or felt necessary to meet all the conditions that were placed in the original condition, you know, use permit. A version of this scenario has played out across the city multiple times over the past fifty-seven years under the existing code because developers have not always been held accountable to the promises they have made. As you heard from my neighbor and fellow board member, Jeff Faraday, yesterday, and our neighbor, the particulars of this situation has been a connecting trail not yet built after twenty-four years. Listening to the exchange between Councilwoman Woodings and Director Keen yesterday evening, I'm unclear whether this problem lies in the code, policy, culture, or simply enforcement. I don't really know. But I've provided in my written comments a suggested addition to the code that I think will correct this problem. Um, and it would require timely compliance with conditions in a conditional use permit. Basically, it says unless the condition specifies otherwise, all permit conditions are to be met within one year of the first resident moving in. I hope you will see fit to add such language to the current rewrite. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Charlie, I don't see Charlie Woodruff, but I have my glasses on. Nope. Uh, Jackie Davidson? Oh, hello. Welcome. And Patricia, come on up. You're next. And then Bud Comper.
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Welcome, and thank you, Mayor, Madam Mayor, and council members. I appreciate all your work that you do. My name is Jackie Davidson. I'm precinct committee woman sixteen fourteen, and I live off of Milwaukee on Canterbury Court. And I'm here to speak in opposition of the Boise modern zoning code. So Idaho has been a long known as a rural family-centered state. It's full of trees and family living. I've lived here for forty-two years, and I'm a homeowner in the southwest bench Boise area. I appreciate the low density. I have pride for my yard, and my neighbors do as well. In the last few years, there have been drastic changes to our city. I've seen a townhome complex, an apartment complex built by my house, and the traffic has become difficult. One townhome is for sale for four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, so I'm not seeing that that is affordable. The idea of density will burden on our infrastructure and utilities. The bench has nice neighborhoods. Though old, these neighborhoods meet the American way of life. A single residence with grass in the front and backyards. Taking these homeowner, owner-owned homes out and replacing them with three-level fourplexes that are forty feet high will destroy these neighborhoods. On page sixteen of the code adoption draft, it shows how a developer can take a five thousand square foot lot and turn it into four townhomes in thirty-five hundred square feet. This will take away homeownership. The residents will be renters with no pride of ownership. Where are all, where are the yards with trees? The backyards are basically asphalt and cement. How's that for climate change? Also, there will be limited parking, and I've seen the results of these rental units and roads are packed with cars. If Boise City develops rental apartments, townhomes, the cars parked on the street will cause roast congestion and soresite. Only one needs to look at what's happening on twenty-seventh and Stewart in Boise to see the consequences of these density apartments. We're also, we will be electing Boise City Council members and a mayor this fall. I'm in Boise District Two, Boise Council District Two. So there are no, currently no elected representative for my district. I'd just like to be able to communicate with my elected representative. With that in mind, I would recommend that the consideration of this rewrite be postponed until after the mayor and city council are solidified. The only one that wins with these planning and zoning rewrites are the developer. Please don't destroy our city with this rewrite. This is the city of trees. We are Idaho. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. You've got a question.
Yeah, thank you for offering your testimony, Jackie. Um, a few times you brought up trees. Are you familiar with the landscape requirements in this code?
I did look at that, and I was looking at these townhouse, house, homes that are on the corner of Eustick and Milwaukee. They're very close to my, where I live. And there's a little strip of trees, or a little strip of grass, and there's one tree. And I looked in, so I looked in the code, and that's what I saw, that the only requirement was a little strip in the front with one tree. And then the back is asphalt and cement.
Okay.
So that's where I'm using that. That's, I'm using that as my example from what I've seen in actual happening.
Yeah.
And then, and it coincided with what I saw in the code.
Yeah, I think that this actually has a little bit more robust tree requirements in those planner strips. So I just wanted to point that out. And I do want to also point out that you have a couple of representatives up here who were elected by the entire city.
Oh, yes.
Um, so I don't want anyone to feel like they didn't elect anyone up at this dais because you absolutely did a few years ago.
So I agree.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm just thinking of that district too.
Okay.
But thank you for your work, and I really appreciate you guys.
Tricia, come on up. And then after Trish goes, we, wait, are you Bud? Okay, I did call your name, so we're gonna take Trish and then Bud, and then we're gonna take a break.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Patricia Nelson, I live at three two two five Snowflake Way in Lakewood, which is, I think, almost fifty years old. If you don't know Lakewood in southeast Boise, it's a mixed-use, single families, apartments, attached, you name it, we have it there. And I love it. I love living there. My comments today are to supplement my written comments that I think are on page two eighty-two of the last batch, and these are things I thought of. First is, there is a policy in the comp plan that I think it's time we ditched, and that's to disregard the land use map for parcels that are one and a half acres or smaller. That was removed. Again, I was a project manager for Blueprint Boise. After a lot of research, we found that that policy had only been used where Blueprint Boise has now mixed-use land use designations. It was added back in for some reason in twenty seventeen after I had left the city, and I did review the record. None of you over here, the mayor may have been on council. There were only four out of seven folks at P and Z. And I think now with this modern zoning code, which I do support, and with the flexibility that between the comp plan now and the zoning code, that if you really can't meet the comp plan or the zoning code, you really should go through a comp plan amendment process. I think that's, that policy was created when we had all of the neighborhoods working on Blueprint Boise, and one of the major themes is predictability. And I think when you have a policy that can just throw out the land use map for most of the city, I believe, that doesn't provide predictability. So that's one comment on the comp plan application before you. And the other is, I'm really pleased that the city has moved from the reasoned statement, this is for the lawyers here, to actual findings. I think findings really give the public and the citizens the real reasons for the decision in terms of the whether and how a particular application meets the code or not. And I did watch yesterday and listen to councilmembers Keith and today, Councilmember Bajant's concerns. Because I'm a weird planner, I read the Supreme Court opinions, and one came out today, Reese versus City of Blackfoot. And I think if we can work on, I don't know that it's necessary in the code, but in practice, the, give more input and more more information on the record that deals with the issue of a prejudice to substantial rights. That is a kind of a, I know it's kind of wonky, but I think it can really help in these cases of displacement and where the city is probably looking at denying something that if you really find that someone's substantial rights were negatively affected, I think that could really make a really good defensible case. And I think it would help those who, who, sorry, it's habit, you know, that are typical just regular citizens that may not know the nuances of land use law. But I think that might, the city could be really helpful in that regard. The other thing I just want to comment, I've got ten seconds, is I just really want to thank the staff. I want to thank the director and the leadership and professionalism that we have at PDS. I want to really thank the citizens committee, and I know some folks are here. Because that's where, I think they got a sandwich and maybe a drink, but they put a lot of time in, so.
Thank you, Trish. Bud, come after Bud, because I'd already called his name. We will take a break, and I want to thank you for all you do at NeighborWorks. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Madam Mayor, fellow congressmen, women, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Bud Comper. I represent NeighborWorks Boise and address is three three eight zero West Americana Terrace here in Boise. NeighborWorks is a five oh one C three nonprofit, community-minded, affordable housing developer who served this community for the last forty-one years. We provide a array of housing services, one of them last Saturday, Paint the Town, painting thirty or twenty-six homes and rake up Boise and other communities around us, but more around the housing is specifically our homebuyer education, down payment assistance through our nonprofit lending arm. But today I'd like to speak to you on behalf of our Affordable Housing Services, which help local families obtain, maintain, and retain their home. I'm here to show support of the updated Boise zoning codes. Providing a safe place for Boise families is at the heart of what we wake up to do each day, and it's not easy. But the task and the opportunities to provide hope for local residents is important, and I wouldn't change anything that I do. The two areas I'd like to speak to you today on behalf of the, uh, NeighborWorks is the transportation and the density areas specifically. First, how our communities and how our new housing and opportunities, those that are being built, how they deal with transportation. And it is difficult for a fifty-seven-year-old zoning plan to address. So what we end up finding is typically this urban sprawl and the development that takes place certainly costs more for the city to continue to move outward, but also eats up our farmland and our foothills that we need and we love and enjoy. The updated plan, I believe, responsibly supports the future city goals and aligns with the transit-oriented housing specific to the corridors used by our community and our employment centers. This vision fits well with NeighborWorks' mission, and for the last ten years, we have worked to develop infill developments for single-family homeownership opportunities within what we call our pocket neighborhoods. Our pocket neighborhoods, or the purpose of our neighborhoods, is to provide high-quality, obtainable housing that grew out of a desire for many to live close to where they live, work, play, or worship. Our neighborhoods work to respect the community architecture around us as we look to build close-to-transit corridors, enhance walkability, increase social interactions for our residents. Secondly, tie in density incentives with requirement for affordable, sustainable housing. While this plan does not meet every need, it does provide a framework for, it encourages affordable housing, which is a great step forward. It is not a surprise that housing has been identified as the number one need in our community, and we have the opportunity this week to positively affect the outcome of our future families. All or most of us, George, you can stay at my house. You're welcome anytime, started our day in a home, and we'll go back to home. A good friend of mine, Jane Pavick, uses this phrase, homes are where jobs go to sleep at night. So I would urge you to consider approval of this new zone rewrite, that it will provide smart growth, obtainable housing for our growing community. Thank you for your help. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Got something.
I have a question for you, Bud. Thanks for being here. One of the criticisms I've heard of this zoning code is that the affordability incentives that are provided to build triplexes or fourplexes are absolutely impossible. They could not be developed or built under that framework. As a nonprofit developer, have you looked at that framework, and do you think that that's actually true, or do you think it's something that could be built and is attainable?
Sure. Madam Mayor and Councilmember Holly Wiggins, this is, I think NeighborWorks looks at it in a unique spotlight in the sense that we have a lot of opportunities to bring in other grant funds to help offset those costs. When I hear those comments, though, I mean, development is just a matter of how many homes can you fit on the property? How do you divide those costs? So I can't see how being able to put more homes on that property would not make things more affordable. That's just the basic math in my mind. So, and that is with or without, you know, the type of funding that we can bring to the table.
Great. Thank you for that insight. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We've got one more for you.
Bud, thank you, and thanks for your comments. I want to extend on President Woodings' question. In terms of the incentives, in your experience, can you do both increased density and also go more green? Is there enough, is there enough profit in that and also keep it affordable? I'm curious about your experience.
Yeah, so right now we are currently developing the thirty-nine unit subdivision on the corner of Cole and Fairview here in Boise. Those homes are plumbed with what we call pre-plum for solar, so we are providing an opportunity for those homes to potentially use solar in the future. There is a cost with that, and it's about four hundred bucks for us to upgrade the paneling system and provide that. Everything you provide in efficiencies does, does cost more and, but I feel like, at least as we look at the homes that we're developing, the affordability piece is how much can I, is that home gonna cost at the, at the very beginning? How much is, what is the total cost? But, and is that affordable? So our down payment assistance is trying to help with bringing those costs down, so that's affordable. But the energy piece, the energy consumption or the high-energy piece for us is now is that home affordable the next month and the next month and the next month? So for us, we are Energy Star certified builder. Indoor air quality plus is just as important. The air we breathe is just as important as the food as we put in our body. And then water sense features are a standard feature for the homes that we built for that reason. It's about that one-time purchase, but it's about that monthly bill that we believe does matter and that we have included those in our costs. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you very much. So we are going to break until four o'clock. Alrighty, welcome back, everybody. I want to, before we get going back on the list, I'll name a couple people that are next. Stephen Dunlap, Dunlap, sorry, Ed McCluskey, Shelley and Roger Ogami, and then Juliana Plater. Um, I just, we just had a break, so I'm gonna ask again, are there folks either here in the room or in the Zoom room that have time constraints that need to testify now? Come on up. Anybody on Zoom? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, my name is Mark Backer. I live at thirteen twenty-seven East twenty-five, North twenty-five East in Leighton, Utah. Um, I'm here on behalf of Yescow Young Electric Sign Company. Madam Mayor and members of the council, first let me congratulate you on undertaking the task of putting a new code in place, and that includes the planning commission staff. As a former member of a planning commission and a city council, I admire your willingness to take on this onerous responsibility instead of kicking the can down the road for another fifty seven years. Uh, I can't imagine the number of hours you spent doing this. Thank you for allowing time to address the council with concerns. I'm specifically going to speak to an item in the sign code, which by the way is nice and succinct. Page three fifteen has a section on electronic message displays or EMDs. Line four under standards reads, each message or frame shall be displayed for a minimum of twenty seconds.
Madam Mayor, um, just to potentially save you a little bit of time, our staff and a few of our council members were able to have some conversations with some folks and we got it changed back to eight seconds.
So is that for the off premise or in total for on premise as well?
Ooh, I would have to get.
Cause I know the memo, the memo from staff was, was for off premise.
I'll follow up on that question, so go ahead and finish. But we did change some of the language back to, to eight seconds. But yeah, go ahead and finish. And if there's extra nuances there, we'll make sure that we take a look at it.
Okay, okay, thank you. The planning commission recommendation in the June first memo to the council recommended a dwell time of eight seconds for billboards, also known as off premise. As I've driven around the city, uh, the billboards that I've seen are larger and higher off the ground than the on premise signs that are in use by the business community. It seems to me that if an eight second dwell time for a larger billboard is supported by uh, staff, then a smaller and less visible on premise sign should have at least the same dwell time and not two and a half times the dwell time of a billboard. As I've driven around the city, many of the on premise signs aren't even visible or legible within an eight second window. And I was actually looking for them. It would also be a disadvantage for new businesses who install an on premise electronic message display when their dwell time is more than twice as long as in the dwell time of an existing EMD. And not to mention the enforcement issues that might arise with enforcement having to know which signs are grandfathered in and, and which are part of those regulated under the new code. The stated purpose of section eleven dash oh four dash oh twelve signs, item C, is improve the effectiveness of signs. And I don't see how increasing the dwell time from eight seconds to twenty seconds improves the effectiveness of these signs. It actually reduces a business owner's opportunity to communicate with the traveling public. I strongly recommend and request the council that the existing dwell time for on premise electronic message displays remain at twenty seconds instead of eight seconds. I'm sorry, remain at the current standard of eight seconds. We can do that in editing, fix it. Um, I'm also in full support of a letter dated March twenty second of this year from the Northwest Sign Council and the International Sign Association. I appreciate your consideration of my recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll make sure that I get clarification on that in the future. I think that there's willingness to look into that if it's not already.
Thank you. Okay, so there are some folks with hands raised online. We're going to go there first, Daniel Malarkey. State, and so just so you know, you're, you're coming up, so you're ready. I'm Daniel Malarkey, Stacy Donahue, Tiffany Deems, Jamie Soma, and then Dave Morris. And then we're going to kick it back to City Hall. Welcome.
Great. Uh, thank you, Mayor McLean and members of city council. My name is Daniel Malarkey and I live at thirty four sixteen Meadow Drive in Boise on the depot bench. Uh, I'm a senior fellow at the Sightline Institute and served on the citizen advisory committee for the new zoning code and want to begin by thanking the staff and my fellow committee members for all their hard work and the many hours of public meetings over the last two years. And as stated in the written testimony that I submitted earlier, I support the new zoning code and encourage you to pass it into law this week. Um, I'm thrilled that the new code makes the following changes in residential zones to allow for more homes for everyone. The code decreases the minimum lot size. The code simplifies the permitting process to lower the risk and cost to gain approval from the city to build more homes. The code increases the maximum size of ADUs and ends the city's discrimination against renters in the primary house. The code allows triplexes and fourplexes that were previously banned in the old code. And the code reduces off street parking requirements for multiplexes by fifty percent. Unfortunately, in my view, these last three points come with new conditions. Many of these newly allowed units will be subject to rent control through deed restrictions and incur higher costs due to requirements to meet sustainability goals. I am all for sustainability and affordability, but these requirements are costly and they don't apply to single family homes. So given the choice of redeveloping a lot with a large, single family home or a fourplex, these added costs and conditions will push developers toward building large homes instead of triplexes and fourplexes. Boise would get more infill development with small units without these requirements. I'll grant that it is difficult to know exactly how developers will respond to Boise's new code. Allowing smaller lots and more forms of housing could motivate more new construction, given the strong market for housing. But I fear that given the rent control and sustainability requirements, not much will change in residential zones. One key metric for evaluating the effectiveness of the new code a year from now is whether Boise increases its share of regional growth. If the new zoning code makes it easier to build housing relative to the status quo in the rest of the region, then Boise's share of new housing units ought to increase. Despite its many attractions, Boise has been adding population at just one third the rate of the rest of Ada and Canyon Counties since two thousand. If the new code really reduces barriers to housing production, then Boise should start building a bigger share of the region's growth. If Boise doesn't see meaningful change in new housing permits as a share of the total permits in the region, then I encourage you to make three changes. Adopt a strategy of new housing production rather than rent control through deed restrictions. Further reduce or eliminate parking requirements and allow builders to tear down old buildings at the end of their useful life to build more homes for more people.
Thank you. You snuck in that last word. That was perfect. Okay. Madam Mayor. Yes, there's a question for you, Daniel. He might've turned himself off.
Oh, Daniel, if you're still there, I just wanted to thank you for your service on the, on the committee and also for your very succinct and I guess helpful testimony where you had things that you supported, concerns that you had, things that we could look at, that was really helpful to me. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, now we've got Stacy Donahue and then Tiffany Deems. We can see you. Hello, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor McLean and City Council. First, I just want to say that I'm in favor of multifamily housing and I'm very concerned about housing affordability in Boise. And so I appreciate that the city is working hard to address this major problem. I've had roommates my entire adult life. I currently rent out a room in my house at below market rates to help me pay the mortgage and to help ease the housing crisis in our city. But I am worried that aspects of the rezone will make it easier for real estate developers and real estate brokerage firms to take advantage of vulnerable members of our community. The increased density expedited project approval, removal of neighborhood notice and replacing public hearings with administrative decisions increases the incentives and the ability for real estate developers to try to buy the homes of senior members of our community on very unfair terms. Many of these senior members of our community are ill equipped to participate on equal footing in these real estate deals. This is happening to my next door neighbor under the current code right now. He's seventy nine years old. He lives on social security and he's losing his home in a one sided, a very one sided deal to a real estate developer. The sales contract was amended several times and almost every time the deal got worse for my neighbor. One of those changes was a hundred thousand dollar price reduction for my neighbor. I don't think that we should be rewarding real estate developers and brokerage firms who take advantage of vulnerable members of our community. And I, I hope that the, um, the city council has considered this problem in the new code or will make some changes so that vulnerable members of our community are not, are, are not the subject of real estate, are, are not targeted for sort of schemes by real estate developers. Thank you for listening to my concerns.
Thanks, Stacy. Tiffany? You're muted, Tiffany.
Thank you. I didn't realize. Um, Madam Mayor and council members, my name is Tiffany Deems. I live at one one three zero one West High Rock Drive in Southwest Boise and I'm testifying in support of the modern zoning code. Um, I first want to thank everybody involved in this process. I know it's been years in the making and I appreciate everyone working towards an affordable Boise for all. I'm going to be speaking as a mom. Um, my biggest concern is affordability for our children and our future generations. With our current housing crisis, families are leaving Boise in search of affordable living or are stuck in less than ideal living situations. I worry that if we do not change the way we think about development and housing, our children and their future families won't be able to afford living in their home, city and community. I would also love to see development of more neighborhoods like Hyde Park where walking and biking are prevalent. Small businesses thrive and community is everywhere. Uh, I know there are no one size fits all solutions to housing and I don't expect everyone to love the new code, but it's a step in the right direction for more affordable Boise. Everyone deserves to have a space they call home. I urge you all to vote yes for an affordable and more sustainable future for Boiseans, young and old. Thank you.
Tiffany, thank you. Jamie Soma?
Hello, uh, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for taking our public testimony. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I reside at forty two forty seven East Arbor Vite Court in Southeast Boise. I just want to thank the staff, uh, Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission for all the work that's been done for the public outreach to help make this, this rewrite possible. Uh, I'm, I'm testifying today in support of the zoning code rewrite for the following reasons. Number one, the greater density that it encourages and allows should result in a more sustainable and fiscally responsible development with regard to city and county infrastructure, which should reduce pressure on property taxes, um, overall. Two, it reduces legal and financial barriers to more diverse development by locals who want to be a part of developing a strong Boise that can be more readily adapt to the changes that we, that we encounter. Number three, it gives specific requirements for affordability and sustainability in order to build more densely, which helps reduce greater speculative land grab with development pressure driving up housing costs. Number four, it increasingly honors the private property rights of landholders over those of a vocal few of their neighbors who, um, would prefer different development. Number five, it increasingly allows for more diverse development patterns based on diverse groups of residents to build the kind of people oriented places that honors people over cars. And it helps to build stronger, safer communities where people from different walks and stages of life can flourish together. So I urge you to vote in support of recommending passage of the zoning code rewrite. And I, I thank you in advance for the political courage that this will take.
Thank you. And now Dave Morris, who I think is also online. And I, I was told that Charlie Woodruff, I'd called Charlie earlier, was here, but I don't see Charlie. If you're online, will you please raise your hand? Dave, welcome. Is Dave with us? Well, okay.
Sorry, it's technical.
There you are. We see you. Welcome.
Yeah, I didn't know what it meant to be invited to be a panelist. Uh, my name's Dave Morris and I live at twenty three oh five North Eighteenth Street here in Boise. And my comments today are in support of the zoning code rewrite. And I want to say, uh, I've heard some criticisms about communication, but I appreciate what I feel is extensive work that's gone to this, this rewrite and communicating about it. I, I've seen a lot of community conversations. I've been invited and I've received outreach via snail mail, email, social media. So I feel, um, that the communication and community involvement have been exceptionally, exceptional. Thank you for that. Uh, you know, I want to say that my family and I have lived in the Treasure Valley for ten years now and eight of those in Boise's North End. And we're not wealthy. We are a dual income family. My wife works in healthcare IT. I've spent most of my career in nonprofit work. Were we not a dual income family, there's no way we'd be able to afford to live just about anywhere in this city any longer and certainly not where we do now. But my family and I are fine. What concerns me is the growing number of people who are no longer able to afford to live in this city. I've been an organizational leader responsible for large staff teams. Uh, and during the, the past five to 10 years especially, uh, I've lost good people who could no longer afford to live anywhere near their workplace. You know, more recently, my son graduated from, uh, college with a technical degree that makes him very employable. And he has said for several years that he would love to return to Boise, but he's already determined that it's not feasible for him to do so. And I appreciate the comments we've heard so far today from, uh, younger people who are, may have a more difficult time renting, well, and purchasing homes. I think that the proposed code rewrite will allow for greater density in a market that's desperately lacking housing stock. I think it will provide measurable, income based affordability requirements. And I see that it allows for mixed use that I believe will make our neighborhoods even more vibrant and livable. So, uh, I wholeheartedly support the code rewrite and I want to thank the mayor and city council for this opportunity for all of us to provide comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Two more. Are they people that I've called or that need to go? Okay. And we're going to go back to, um, City Hall now. Stephen Dunlap, Dunlap, welcome. Thanks for being here.
Steve Dunlap?
Steve, sorry.
Two, three, four, two, East Independence Drive in Boise, eight three seven oh six. I live in District Four, so I have no specific city council person. I reached out to the three at large counselors with a specific concern and a specific question about the mitigation of potential negative impact of this change on my home of twenty years. I received no response and with that in mind, I insist that a vote on this issue should be delayed until after the election. So every Boisean will have a duly elected council person dedicated to the people and the interests of their district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I just want to note, um, and I ran into this with a couple of my constituents as well. We had a lot of volume of email that came in. And I, I'm not sure how other council members were handling that. I know I read, but did not respond to every single email that I got. But I did take them in, I read them. We made sure that they became part of the record when that was appropriate. So just because you didn't get a specific response to your specific question, it likely wasn't because people didn't care. It was probably just because if we would have responded to every single email, that would have been our full time job for the past year and it would have been a lot. So I just wanted to note that and thank you for reaching out.
Thank you.
Okay, Ed McCluskey, I don't see Ed here. Is Ed online? Okay, Ed, you're up. And then Shelley Ogami and Roger Ogami. If you're online, just raise your hands. Welcome, Ed.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Thank you. Hi, I'm Ed McCluskey, BSU Professor Emeritus residing at nineteen nineteen Verna Lane in Boise. In the interest of a genuinely democratic process, now is not the time to act on this radical rewrite, except to place the matter on hold until after the city council is fully elected and seated, as it should be. Sure, you can cite Idaho law, which allows executives like the mayor to appoint people to otherwise elected positions. Because it's allowed, I can, however, is reasoning that is dissonant to public ears when such a major and sweeping transformation is up for a vote. The moral high ground here is to ensure democratic representation through city council elections by districts next November, as Idaho law also, uh, allows, but it also demands it. Only a real emergency between now and November might rescue actions this week from the ground you stand on. One third of you are appointed. Under normal operations, these would be treated as interim appointments. The decision is not interim at all. Despite vague assurances of revision and the impulse to just try it out, an approval vote will be an irreversible act on the side of developers rather than the public. Indeed, after a vote of approval, half of this body can simply walk away from citizen accountability at the upcoming election. from citizen accountability at the upcoming election. I do not cast aspersions on any of you individually when I say that this week is yet another exercise rushing to win on the side of developers and those wealthy enough to rent. As I said in my written testimony, the city's claims of fair representation rest on deeply flawed engagement practices, bad public opinion research, and the marginalization of critical voices through a management enterprise by the public engagement industry. I conclude this through peer-reviewed research now published in an academic journal's special issue focusing on the public engagement industry suppression of the public sphere. These suppressive practices have alienated many Boiseans treated to public opinion management attempts that selectively filtered outcomes in research and policy to satisfy the client, the city of Boise. Professional and narrow circles perhaps, but too narrow in the annals of communication and public sphere research performed by independent scholars and planners. The director kept saying that this is the city we want, while at the same time excluding those who want meaningful input for Level Two applications and less dense sized applications under four stories. It's appalling to hear that public hearings are just too inconvenient for staff and too unpredictable for developers and builders. In the name of transparency and predictability, a gun is held to the public with the city poised to shoot the messiness of democracy. We are all laboring under a foregone conclusion and false choices and that above all else should be the occasion for feeling insulted. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you, Ed. Are the Ogamis here? Shelley, Shelley, great.
Sorry, I didn't see you, um, up back there, so I had moved beyond you, but I'm just, Roger's here too?
Roger's here.
Great, thanks.
I'm Shelley Ogami. I reside at six-one-oh-five West Edgewater Drive, um, Boise on the West Bench. And I've lived there for thirty-seven years. Uh, the Upzone is a catastrophe in the making. To quote John Bertram, the nineteen-seventies tore down, or the nineteen-seventies tore buildings down in the name of urban renewal. That period of urban renewal was kind of all about urban removal. Did we not learn a thing from this? The Upzone is a land grab in mass proportions to line the pockets of speculators and investors such as BlackRock, developers, builders, and even realtors. We are destroying iconic forty-forties bungalows and the nineteen-fifties and sixties one-stories mid-century modern homes. These to be replaced by buildings with no architectural creativity, but one of five designs, so every block looks alike. It's the biggest follow the money scheme or transfer of wealth since the seventies. This proposed law is elitist, it's ageist, it's racist, and it's environmentally unsound. By changing the proposed law, I'm sorry, you've heard, this is, by changing the laws, you steal the hard-earned investments from underneath homeowners. Affordable house and affordable housing for renters. These investments that were carefully thought out such as single-story homes infused with light, save electricity, and allow seniors to stay in their homes without stairs or barriers. A garden space to grow one's food and flowers for a home that will have pollinators in their area. Green space that is needed for replenishing aquifers. Trees for shade and cooling and wildlife and a swing set for kids and even a dog. You want to destroy this by allowing buildings of seventy-six feet tall blocking the sunlight of single-story existing homes, placing four buildings on a lot that housed one. The term snuggle up was used when you mean packed like sardines. And a home for everyone is actually disingenuous and deserves five Pinocchios. Cement instead of grass, four HVAC units instead of one, consuming energy. No parking, no road improvements, and no new schools. There is nothing neighborly about taking away the notification to homeowners about potential changes in their area, but allows P and Z free rein. Seems very unethical as well as creating a transient housing that may end up sitting empty while investors enjoy write-offs. And certainly not affordable rents for blue collar workers. It is the blue collar workers for the most part that are impacted. When you tear down affordable homes, you will see the trickle down. You have now removed the backbone of the city. Where do we house our first responders, our police, our fire, our AMTs, our nurses?
Your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roger? And then I'm going to ask other people to, um, come up. I need you to be on deck, please. Juliana Plater, David Anderson, Roberta D'Amico, and Belle Craig.
Hello, my name's Roger Ogami. Uh, I'm neither an engineer nor a planner. I'm not as eloquent as my wife is. She speaks very well. What I am is, I like to think of myself as an observant person. And I'm here to speak in opposition to the new code rewrite. And my reasons for this is I go down, recently down Franklin and Curtis, Franklin and Orchard. You see these monstrosities of the building for the new apartments. And I don't know how the people down on Hilton, I can't even imagine how you guys have impacted their lives and their homes. Other than that, as you look down Franklin, how in the world are those two buildings going to get out on Franklin or even get out of their apartment complex? It's a catastrophe waiting to happen. I think time needs to be taken. I think we also need to wait until we do get representation in our district for the 2013 election before we take a vote on this. And that's my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Roger. Juliana, Juliana? All right, David Anderson? Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. David Anderson, Idaho Program Manager with American Farmland Trust. I'm a resident of Boise and my home office is on West Regan Avenue in the West End. Thanks for having me here today. Apologize for reading my testimony as I'm attempting to squeeze ten pounds of potatoes into a three-pound bag. AFT's farm under threat twenty-fourty model used fifteen years of land conversion data to estimate the impact of three different growth scenarios. Business as usual, rampant sprawl, and building better cities. Looking at business usual, the model estimates that we will develop almost two square miles of farmland in Ada County each year. Considering the Boise is and will continue to be a major employment center of the Treasure Valley and coupled with our shortage of middle housing options, those employees are having to drive until they qualify and promoting sprawl to the rest of the Treasure Valley. So if we extend that scale to the rest of Treasure Valley, our model estimates the development is consuming three and a half square miles of farmland every year. Our estimates also, uh, estimate that that conversion is costing our agricultural economy in this state twenty million dollars per year. I want to circle back on the better building city scenario. This modeling for this scenario estimates that these actions will significantly reduce development pressure on farmland by as much as fifty percent. Your approval of the ZCR has a potential to protect two square miles of farmland from conversion each year and thousands of existing agricultural industry jobs in the Treasure Valley. Our local food system experienced an approximate sixty percent growth in sales at the start of the pandemic. The takeaway is that we had capacity to respond when our brittle food supply chains were disrupted. As our population continues to grow, we need to protect our local food system and prioritize expansion of that system for future upsets, which are a given with the foreseeable ongoing challenges for climate, energy resources, and geopolitical instability that threaten global food, so, uh, global food production. When asked, our local food producers indicate that access to affordable land and water is critical to their success. No farms, no food. So back to the ZCR, overall, it offers the needed clarity for urban ag production to integrate with surrounding and differing land uses. The concern that we have is that the A-one and A-two zoning, which would favor urban agriculture, is its lack of permanence. Our modeling estimates that low-density residential parcels in Idaho are a hundred times more likely to be further subdivided in higher density within twenty years of their initial conversion from rural agriculture. Possible opportunities to protect urban ag production include the creation of special use overlays like the Sycamore overlay. In addition, prioritizing community gardens and microfarms in planned urban develops, developments, and partnering with our local land trust to promote and more importantly, help afford conservation easements to specifically protect working lands and keep them more affordable for future generations of farmers. In closing, AFT appreciates the extensive effort of both the planning team and this board to, uh, for the modern zoning code and supports its timely approval.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Could you remind me what AFT stands for again?
American Farmland Trust.
American Farmland Trust.
Yeah, we are a forty-year nonprofit, national nonprofit.
And David, I've got a question. Um, the Sycamore overlay is, all overlays are, um, held over in the zoning code as it is. So, um, so I don't think that you were saying that we aren't doing that, but I did have a question about, um, you mentioned conservation easements, wondering if your interpretation is that this precludes them or that we can continue to work with you and others to create them. Okay.
Yeah.
And then you mentioned the, kind of the trans latency, if you will, of, um, transient nature of the A-one and A-two openlands.
Mm-hmm.
In this, so is AFT's position that in the, in the modern zoning code, there's more certainty with farmland preservation, or was there a recommendation in there that I dismissed?
Yeah, there's a recommendation there that we see more permanence.
More permanence.
More permanence, yeah. The challenge with low-density residential is this does fragment our productive ag land. And then once we start down that process, the ability to continue to zone to higher density, then we lose the productivity of those smaller parcel ag lands.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, everyone.
So Roberta? And then, oh, there you are. Great. And then Belle Craig? If you're here, come on up. Hank Allen and Sherri Gorrell or Gorrell?
I feel really short.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, City Council members. Thank you for your service and the opportunity to comment. I have lived at thirty-one oh nine South Crossfield Way for over twenty years. I'm a citizen volunteer representing myself and I was on the Citizen Advisory Committee for the rewrite. I want to recognize and thank the city's planning and development team for their work and extensive public involvement on this project. I'm here to express my overall support for the modern zoning code. I doubt there is much that I can say today that hasn't been or will be said by others. That said, solutions don't happen overnight and the modern zoning code lays out a plan for the long-term growth of our city to provide housing options at different price points. I volunteer with several climate action groups. I support the Climate Action Plan and the Modern Zoning Code gives me hope for the climate and sustainability. I submitted written testimony. One piece I am briefly repeating here is that is the need to develop and schedule an evaluation process for the code. I attended ninety-two percent of the public meetings hosted by the city as well as regularly attending my neighborhood association meetings as a non-board member. The associations are volunteer organizations and I applaud their efforts as well as the work they have accomplished. As a volunteer, I know how hard it is to recruit, maintain, and facilitate volunteer organizations. Last night, Eric Berg did a great job in representing the Southeast Neighborhood Association Board, which prompted me to change my testimony for today. CINA does not represent me, nor does it represent my family, friends, and neighbors who support the code. The CINA postcard mentioned last night that went out in early twenty-twenty-two to promote the city informational meeting in the southeast was initiated and drafted by me, a non-board member. Additionally, speakers invited to speak to the board did not represent all perspectives on this code. For the record, CINA has six distinct areas with fifteen out of a fully staffed board of twenty-four. My area, Area Four, is currently represented by one member. The NAs are very diverse, as is their ability to communicate to their constituents varies greatly. There's a capacity issue and this needs to be addressed in communications. Communications is a lot of work. I'm sure the NAs themselves have suggestions for improvement, as do I, which is why I've requested a meeting with Nicole Carr, the Energizer Coordinator. There is no perfect plan in life or in land management planning. Plans are dynamic. This plan does not and will not satisfy everyone. Yet it's a bold step to move Boise forward. We cannot kick the zoning can down the road any longer. Boise can lead the Treasure Valley forward as the challenge of growth is not Boise's alone. Thank you for your time and dedication to this issue and I stand for questions.
Thank you for your service on the committee. Um, and if, if it hasn't been scheduled, I'm sure that you'll hear back from Nikki about that.
I have it scheduled for the end of the month, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. And Belle, Belle Craig? All right, I saw Hank Allen, um, online. Welcome, Hank. Well, we saw you a minute ago. Is Hank still with us? All right.
Yep, he's coming.
Oh, there you go.
There we go. You guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Well, City Council, Mayor, thank you for letting me speak and, uh, and share my opinions here. And I, um, think this, um, resolution or the zoning rewrite should be postponed until the new city council has a chance to look at this. Um, in particular, uh, some of the details throughout this plan that haven't been looked at. One is the, uh, the wireless communication facility rewrite that has happened. I know we've talked to city council multiple, multiple times on this. And every, the talk tonight is all about, uh, density and housing. Um, but this current rewrite has basically decimated the wireless, uh, zoning ordinance for, uh, the city of Boise. And it hands all control over to big wireless Verizon, AT&amp;T, to put small cell wireless, uh, antennas anywhere they want in our city. And it's, it's a catastrophe. Um, they put a cell tower about six hundred yards behind my house out here in Eagle. And I went into AFib within, uh, one week of the tower, the tower going on and the antennas going on. Uh, the current city council has basically taken all of the citizens' rights for the city of Boise and handed over to the wireless industry. And they could put a cell tower in front of your house or a small cell in front of your house and there's nothing the citizens of Boise can do right now. Um, this, this is, this is horrible. And, uh, you guys are dealing with, uh, a very toxic, uh, environmental pollutant with these, this staroff radiation. And you're doing nothing to protect the citizens. I understand we want change and everybody thinks that 5G and, uh, cell phones is the best thing sun-sliced bread, but it's not. It's going to harm people. I know multiple people in our community and throughout the Treasure Valley who are all complaining of AFib and going and having heart palpitations. And this is all a result of this, uh, the, the 5G rollout. I have talked to, uh, senior planner Tim Keen multiple times about this and he's failed to get back to me. Uh, we've talked to, I've talked to the mayor, the city council there and we've, we've warned people and they just continue to allow this rollout to happen and not put measures in to protect the citizens of, of Boise. Um, uh, when the code was originally passed, everyone was under the assumption that, that they were preempted by the ninety-six Telecommunications Act and there's nothing the city can do. Their hands were tied. This is incorrect. Uh, Ada County has stood up to the telecommunications, uh, industry on multiple occasions now and shut down towers. The city of Eagle, they have adopted a wireless ordinance that, uh, doesn't allow, uh, cell towers in residential neighborhoods. They're protecting their citizens and the current city council is not doing that for Boise. And I think this, this needs to be addressed before the season's finished. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next, we have, Madam Mayor, can I just ask a clarifying question of staff? It was my understanding that 5G facilities were, are dealt with in a different part of city code and not in the zoning code rewrite?
Mayor, Councilmember Widdings, uh, the 5G aspect of our regulations is in the zoning code.
Oh, it is. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
All right, uh, Sherri Gorrell? Is Sherri online? All right. Then I'm going to read up the next couple, read out. Steve Reinhardt, Vivian Lockery, Randy Wall, and Andrew Herden, and then Jennifer Whitaker. If you're in the room, please come on up, um, to the front row. And if you're online, please raise your hand. Steve Reinhardt? All right, Vivian Lockery? Vivian here? Come on up.
Vivian Lockery, twenty-two-eleven North Eighteenth Street. Thank you, Madam Mayor and esteemed City Council members. I support mixed-use zoning and have much admiration for the huge commitment and collaborative efforts of all involved in the proposed modern zoning code. However, I oppose the proposed code for the reason that it will allow simple administrative approval in many of the rezoned neighborhood. Um, allowing for development of types of land uses such as for triplex- allowing for development of types of land uses such as for triplexes, duplexes, I mean, triplexes, fourplexes, neighborhood retailing cafes, et cetera, simultaneously removing parking requirements. What this means is that for those neighborhoods, all public involvement processes, the conditional use permitting with public notification and public hearings have been removed. All that is required is an administrative nod in favor of developers, opening the floodgates for developers looking to build big in quaint communities. I don't know if our new city council members and others in attendance here know that this is exactly what happened when Boise's mayor and city council did when they changed the wireless communication section of the city code over a year ago, despite over one thousand individuals that spoke and/or provided written testimony or written comment in opposition to the draft, which was stripping the wireless ordinance of these same protective measures, the public involvement processes that I spoke about, conditional use permitting, public hearings, and public notification. Based on the public input, planning and zoning recommended not to eliminate the conditional use permit and other existing public involvement processes from that wireless ordinance. The mayor and city council simply chose to ignore their recommendation. The proposed zoning code will encourage the demolition of existing homes and redistribute ownership to investors who can afford to do this type of redevelopment. How does this increase affordability when it will displace renters and increase property values? I don't understand. Making it even harder for Boise residents to become homeowners as they compete with large investors. Property tax is already a growing burden for homeowners will increase as well. The city of Boise needs to come up with something to promote land use zoning that benefits all the city residents, not just developers. And I urge the city council to reject or minimally postpone the zoning code as currently written. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Vivian. Randy Wall. Andrew Herden, come on up. And then we've got Jennifer Whitaker, Sylvia Adams, Nina Pinnar, and Patty Bowen.
Hi, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for your service and for your time on this matter. My name is Andrew Herndon. I live downtown in an apartment at four zero six South Fourth Street. I want to focus on a couple of things that I find exciting about this zoning update. First, I'm excited about more active spaces in neighborhoods. Living downtown, my partner and I can just walk out the door and find fun, interactive, and exciting things to do pretty quickly and easily. And that does exist in a few places outside of the downtown area, like in Hyde Park and that commercial space in Leita that has the Push and Pour and a couple other stores. But a lot of the city doesn't get to have that kind of facility nearby. And those areas, I think, are, they add so much to the quality of life in an area to be able to just walk around, do something, and walk home. And they tend to be local businesses, so we'd like to support that. I like to support that. And I hope that more neighbors in different parts of the city can get to see that from this change. The second thing is I'm excited for more housing options. My partner and I rent, which, for the record, is a perfectly valid version of the way of American life. But we don't necessarily see that we will be renters forever. Looking around at the options that exist right now, there's not really anything that makes sense. With some of the contemplated versions of things that will exist, townhouses, smaller, more dense properties, that sounds more exciting. Maybe we'll move into something like that if it's available. Or maybe we'll continue to rent. Either way, just like having those options, I think it's a good thing for everyone. And the third thing is also, I'm really excited for seeing the change and shift in the zoning for downtown. Downtown is changing, and the shift in focus from it being primarily commercial to basically entirely mixed zone, mixed use zoning, is a good idea because it's going to help guide the neighborhood as it transitions from being not just a commercial and cultural center, but also into really a place to live. I did have a couple of things that I wanted to give feedback on. The first was the deed restrictions for triplexes and fourplexes. I think that that kind of mechanism is potentially going to have inadvertent consequences because deed restrictions are permanent unless indicated otherwise when they're put into place. I think it's a good idea to have some sort of expiration set into them by the code already so that those properties don't accidentally end up getting locked up. We're trying to move away from exclusionary zoning, and locking properties into a single specific kind of concept is not going to help that part. So having something that allows them to expire would be a good thing. The second is also basically looking at parking requirements across the board. I think that it's good to reduce parking requirements. There are people who do need cars, and there should be spots that exist for that. But not everyone does use a car, and people do carpool and ride share and use bicycles and have all sorts of other transportation ways that they get around.
Time.
So, thank you.
Andrew, thank you. Jennifer Whitaker. Sylvia Adams. Nina, come on up. Then we've got Patty Bowen. Welcome, Patty. Welcome, Nina. Elaine Zabriskie, come on up if you're here. Luca Amador, Andrew Koaluski. Koaluski. All right, Nina. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Madam Mayor, City Council members, thank you so much for being here and taking the time to hear everyone speak. My name is Nina Pinner, and I live at fifteen sixteen North Twenty First Street. I am testifying today as the Director of Bicycle Advocacy for the Boise Bicycle Project, and I would like to express our strong support for the new zoning code. The proposed update has the potential to positively impact the neighbors and individuals we work with on a daily basis by promoting accessibility, equity, community empowerment, and people-friendly streets. At the Boise Bicycle Project, we see firsthand how important a bicycle can be to so many families in the valley. Many of these families we work with often live on the edges of the city, surrounded by wide, high, wide, high-speed roads with little to no access to amenities such as grocery stores, parks, or schools, other than by car. This can be a huge barrier for many families and individuals. In early May, we helped run the Bike to School Day, and it was incredible seeing two hundred kids being able to safely bike to school. A lot of the feedback we got from those families was that they'd love to see kids being able to do this every day. And I know some of you were there to see that. The proposed rewrite aims to foster healthier and more sustainable communities by promoting bicycle-friendly neighborhoods. And through this, we can empower residents to choose cycling as a healthy and affordable mode of transportation. This not only enhances mobility options, but also provides greater access to education, employment, and essential services for individuals who may not have access to private vehicles. Furthermore, the proposed rewrite also takes into account the need for more bicycle parking provisions. It recognizes that providing ample secure bike parking at key destinations is essential to support incentivizing cycling. Although this is an incredible step forward, it would be really nice to see even further restrictions made to reduce car parking access and increase bike parking. Moreover, as we all know, Boise is facing a significant housing affordability crisis. And with the new code's help, by encouraging the development of housing options that create a range of income levels, we can foster diverse communities where people from different backgrounds can live side by side and use a range of transportation methods to move around the city. Opportunities such as this offers families like those the Boise Bicycle Project works with the possibility to live closer to areas of work and access to a wider range of amenities. If things continue as it is right now, those communities that BVP serves will not be able to afford to live and stay in Boise. So in closing, I urge you to support the Boise zoning code rewrite, and I would also like to thank the staff for all the hard work they've done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nina. Patty Bowen. Welcome, Patty.
Hello, Baron, City Council. My name is Patty Bowen. I live at nine twelve West Fort Street, right next to the Boise Co-op. I'm here today to testify in favor of the Boise Modern Zoning Code. I work for Conservation Voters for Idaho. Our team of door knockers got out into the community starting in early April to learn more about the concerns that residents had about the rewrite and chat about our bread and butter, which is sustainability. What we found was most people were in favor of the rewrite when we sidestepped some of the rhetoric and discussed the specific provisions in the zoning code rewrite. So what we found is Boisians almost universally supported the requirement to improve our tree canopy, more community cafes and restaurants to provide community hubs, new requirements to support pollinators, allowances for more density when developments meant affordability and sustainability requirements, improved sidewalks and pathways to allow for safer walking and biking, and new rules to allow for more starter homes. Much of the opposition was in fear of the wrong kind of development. While some folks were concerned about massive apartment complexes going in next door, their concerns were often assuited when we shared how density was targeted in mixed use zones, how density increases were gentle, and how there were specific provisions to protect the look and feel of neighborhoods. Unfortunately, we also found some of the concerns about the wrong kind of development were rooted in unfair and inaccurate stereotypes about renters, multifamily residents, and refugees. We even heard some of these comments in Neighborhood Association meetings as well. We've rejected these reviews, and whenever one of our canvassers had a good conversation, they asked that the person fill out a postcard with their feelings about the zoning code rewrite. They could be as simple as, I support this, but as you'll see from the one hundred and twenty five postcards, which are also in the public record, many of those were much more in-depth. I've split these postcards into about seven groups, and with your permission, I'll come up and distribute them so you can kind of look through all the different comments that we got. Our voter outreach specialists Elaine, Andrew, and Luca are signed up to testify after me, and you can kind of talk to them about the details and experiences that they've had at the door and why this mattered to them. But I'll stand for any questions. Do y'all want those postcards?
Yeah, why don't you bring them up, and then we'll have them, and they'll go into the record as well. Thank you, Patty. Elaine, welcome.
Madam Mayor. I'm one of those people who needs the microphone. Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you. My name is Elaine Zabriskie, and I live in Boise on the Depot Bench, zip code eight three seven zero five. I'm testifying today in support of Boise's Modern Zoning Code. I am a voter outreach specialist at Conservation Voters for Idaho, and over the last two months, I knocked around two hundred and fifty doors talking about this issue every time. Time and time again, my conversations with my neighbors showed me that people care deeply about their community and about protecting their environment. Almost everyone was excited about corner grocery stores, safe streets, and protected natural lands because people move to Boise for a reason. They want to enjoy the community and the outdoor recreation opportunities that we have and that are so unique to our city. Beyond these reasons, I personally support this rewrite because, as a renter and a young citizen of Boise, I want my city to be affordable, comfortable, and safe from wildfires and climate change. I want my future to be here, but I need policy support like this code to make sure that that is actually possible. I know that people are afraid of the change that this new zoning code might bring, but great communities are something that we choose to create, and we need to change in order to make that happen. After all, all the construction that everyone is so frustrated about, myself included, happened under the current zoning code. While this new draft won't be a perfect fix, I consider it a thorough and impactful improvement that invests in the city that I love and my chance to live in it. And on a personal note, I have been priced out of housing in Boise twice. The first time, my apartment complex sold, and my rent went up from nine hundred and fifty dollars a month to almost double that at eighteen hundred a month, and I had no choice but to leave. The second time it happened, I was renting a house in the West End. We were told that the owner was selling, and we had thirty days to leave. That happened to be at the peak pricing mountain for Boise for housing, and we struggled to find a two-bedroom apartment for less than eighteen hundred dollars a month that was within the area where we could still get away with just one car. That's an area that's serviced by public transit. We ended up finding a place to live, but the entire situation, if we had had the ability to put in an offer on that house when it went up for sale, we would have, but it sold for over seven hundred thousand dollars. And instead of being an opportunity for us, it was just a reminder of how far away from our housing goals we really were. This zoning code and the provisions for affordable housing mean that I could actually get to stay here, and that means a lot to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Luca.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Luca Amador, and I live at eighty three forty eight South Bogus Ridgeway. I'm here to support the Boise's Modern Zoning Code. As a voter outreach specialist at Conservation Voters for Idaho, over the last several weeks, I have personally knocked on nearly seven hundred doors to talk to Boisians about the proposed code. I found that most members of our community were excited to hear about the city's plans to preserve open spaces, protect and diversify the tree canopy, and incentivize water and energy efficiency while also increasing the supply of affordable housing and promoting walkability throughout the city. The current zoning code was implemented in the nineteen sixties, which only allows one type of development in seventy five percent of residential areas, single-family homes on relatively large lots. Originally intended to keep black families out of white neighborhoods, this provision ultimately hurts all Boisians by artificially restricting the supply of housing and preventing many forms of mid to low-cost housing from being built. The fears about this change are, at the end of the day, the same as they were back in nineteen sixty. Many people fear that if Boise neighborhoods are accessible to everyone, this will bring about lower property values and crime. In fact, nearly the opposite is true. Studies show cities with high levels of economic segregation suffer more crime, while mixed-income neighborhoods promote community involvement and upward mobility. Thank you for your time, and thank you to the staff and all the work they put into this effort. I'll stand for questions.
Thanks, Luca. Come on up, Andrew. And then we'll have Ian McLaughlin, Bronson Grange, Lisa Hecht, and August McKernan.
Hello, Mayor, council members. My name is Andrew Kowalewski. I'm a student at BSU, and I work as a voter outreach specialist for Conservation Voters for Idaho. Over the last several weeks, I've knocked on over six hundred and fifty doors. I'm here representing CBI, but also myself and my individual perspective. To echo some of the things that my colleagues have said knocking on doors, people are, they want protection of open spaces. They want walkability, bikeability. Also, protection of farmlands and public lands was hugely important to them as well. And a lot of the concern with just the logic of keeping in place zoning codes from the sixties, the original ones that aren't really accommodating Boise's current pace of growth and development. So from an individual perspective, I'm currently a resident of Meridian. I had to move from Boise, and now I'm currently looking in Nampa as well because Meridian's too expensive for me. And so the lack of housing affordability is kind of getting to me. I have to drive to school during the week as well, which made me aware of kind of how bad traffic congestion is as well. So before I learned of the specific provisions in the rewrite, I was already in favor of the process, the whole process, the public input process. I think that's allowed for the zoning code, allowed for them to include a wide variety of voices, which acknowledges the efficacy of our local democracy outreach and engagement. When I eventually read over the specifics before I jumped on the canvassing campaign, I was delighted to learn that energy efficiency incentives, while being self-evident in their benefit, could bring down housing costs in new developments. I would appreciate being able to look for housing in Boise closer to school and the office where I work. And I know many of my fellow BSU upperclassmen also live in Nampa and Caldwell are making that same trek over. The other point I want to discuss is a more controversial one, the targeted density. More density would keep Boise from building outward and consuming more of the foothills. I would also allow for more resource-efficient infrastructure. The opposition I've heard about density is one I'm sure you've all heard as well. But most of the people at the doors who are against the code rewrite were afraid that, you know, multifamily homes will lower the value of their properties. Once I informed them of the actual provisions of the DCR, there's far more support. People came around to the rewrite when we talked about the specifics of gentle density. It made the trajectory of the future of our city seem more promising to those people. So I support targeted density, increasing density around existing infrastructure. Made sense to people at the doors as well, and people and myself included enjoy the prospect of a more comprehensive transit system, more likely facilitated by the targeted density and E D infrastructure provisions that we're seeing. I'm excited to follow the rest of the process, and I wish you luck in your informed decision-making. I hope you're able to make and continue to incorporate the public's feedback as we move forward. Thank you for all the work you've done, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thanks, Andrew.
All right, thank you.
All right, Ian McLaughlin. And then Bronson Grange. Welcome, Ian.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Ian McLaughlin, fifty two oh six North Sunderland Drive, West Valley. I want to start by thanking the tremendous amount of work that planning and zoning staff did. As a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee, I understand and know all the tough conversations we had, careful examination and tireless outreach that they did, and I want to thank them for this important work. My wife and I moved here in twenty nineteen. My wife and I moved here in 2019. We fell in love with the city for many of the reasons that you all probably love it. Access to outdoors, unique and interesting neighborhoods, access to the river and people here are really, really nice. When we moved here, we lived in southeast Boise. We enjoyed the bikeability. I biked to work probably 200 days a week. It was great. Had access to different amenities. When we started looking for a home, we wanted something that would fit those characteristics. We got extremely lucky with the timing. We bought in the middle of pandemic. So when there's a slight lull and the tremendous rising costs of housing and we end up in West Valley neighborhood. Our neighborhood is wonderful, great people, access to parks. We're not too far from downtown, a little bit harder to bike to work. We even have a mix of housing. We have duplexes right next to single family homes across the street from cottage courts and it works out very well. One thing our neighborhood does lack is walkability and I believe the proposed zoning code will address some of those issues by adding cafes, markets, restaurants to neighborhoods, stuff that I would love to, my wife would love to be able to walk to, ride our bikes to. So at any rate, I encourage you to approve the proposed zoning code and to legalize homes for all neighborhoods and all Boiseans. If we further delay this five year process, we're going to run same regional issues that we're seeing across the state. Issues that we're seeing in towns like Haley, Ketchum, McCall, where people who run, help the city run smoothly. Those are our service workers, police officers, nurses, educators. Those people won't be able to afford houses in the city and obviously that is not going to work. So I support and view the new zoning code as a ordinance essential to coping with the changes that we're facing as a city. And we should choose to prepare for the future that we want and we can be proud of. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor.
A second, Ian.
I have a quick question for you, Ian. What, since you served on the Citizen Advisory Committee, I think you'll know the answer to this. What is your closest mixed use activity center to where you live?
Oh. Depends on how you define mixed use.
So those places that we designated in the comprehensive plan, like here's where mixed use development is going to go, where we're going to have grocery stores and restaurants and some of that stuff.
Yeah, I want to say it's fair view.
Fair view?
Yep.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your service. Welcome, Bronson.
All right. My name is Bronson Grange. I'm with Hawkins Companies. And the address is eight five five West Broad Street, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven zero two. Today I'd like to talk about the airport influence overlay. Originally, there were two maps used to define the airport influence overlay area within code. A recently suggested code revision proposes eliminating reference to the noise exposure map and focusing solely on the airport influence area map to define the airport influence overlay. What are the differences between these maps and are we moving forward with the right one? So the airport influence area map origins, Matt Pataia with the Boise City Airport told us that the map was created in the 1980s around 40 years ago. Not even Boise airport staff know the methodology by which the airport influence area map was drawn and they produced it. We've researched the topic extensively. We've discussed the map with Boise Airport, the FAA. We've obtained the results of the earliest Boise Airport sound studies, which were done in 1992, well after the creation of the airport influence area. There is no documentation or explanation of what the map is based on, other than assumptions that it was based on random noise complaints from the 1980s. Here is the area within which the airport influence area suggests limiting or prohibiting residential development. It is 12,501 acres. On the other hand, you have the part 150 noise exposure map. The part 150 study prepared by the airport's consultant states figure two, which is the noise exposure map that we're referencing, represents a worst case scenario for which the city of Boise and Ada County can use to make informed land use and zoning decisions. These are modern maps prepared by the Boise Airport using sound professionals designed using well documented federally mandated guidelines, approved by the FAA, used by the FAA. They use the most current sound data and growth assumptions available, updated every five years for the intended purpose of land use planning. Here is the area within which the noise exposure map suggests limiting or prohibiting residential development. It is 2,648 acres. As you can see, Boise Airport is proposing a 10,000 acre buffer between where they would like to see housing limited or prohibited and what the federal government has determined as warranted using modern worst case scenario assumptions. We've come up with a couple of questions that we think should be considered when determining which map should be used in our modern code rewrite for future land use planning. Is the code, was, was it created within the last 40 years? Is it updated every five years? Does it incorporate future airport growth assumptions? Is it based on results of sound studies performed by sound professionals? Does it have a stated purpose of informing land use decisions? Does it use federally approved guidelines for its development? Is the documented and understood, does it have a documented and understood origin and purpose? Is it approved by the FAA? Does it influence airport funding and are the zones based on sound rather than arbitrarily using city streets? The conclusion of a public records request confirmed that the airport only keeps complaint data for five years. And since 2018, there have only been 38 airport related complaints made with no apparent correlation to the airport influence area map. The airport influence area unnecessarily and unjustifiably prohibits the development of 10,000 acres for residential units near some of Boise's largest employment centers, decreasing housing stock and increasing housing prices and commute times. This promotes and necessitates urban sprawl. Thank you, guys.
Very much. Appreciate it. Okay, Lisa, I didn't see Lisa. Is Lisa online? All right, we, we, oh, I saw you from, there you are. Welcome.
Thank you. So good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council members, and thank you for this opportunity to provide input. My name is Lisa Hecht. I live at forty nine twenty East Sagewood Drive in Boise. And I arrived in Boise 43 years ago in 1980 to work for HP. I've watched HP's growth from a city of 40,000 to its current population and the benefits and challenges associated with that. I was on the Citizens Advisory Council in 1992 and advocated for a connected system wide cycling plan, which I'm pleased to see has largely occurred. So I have two areas of comments. So first, I support this zoning code rewrite for the following reasons. Number one, transportation and congestion. And approximately 30% of Boiseans don't drive. This plan accounts for that by offering more options for cyclists, pedestrians, those who are differently abled and those who choose not to drive. We saw during the pandemic how important those alternate and healthy modes are for Boise. I'm a cyclist and keep healthy and happy getting to many places in Boise's beautiful greenbelt. Secondly, I support the, the update because the answer in part is co-locating housing developments near transportation options to relieve congestion and the associated air pollution, which is encouraged in this plan. And we have seen, you know, along the west coast, you know, the rapid growth of homelessness and by allowing multiple opportunities for places to live and affordabilities, we can reduce the risk of that. And Boise will be more productive by encouraging these, these other modes in it, in it, rather than just more parking, because that space can be used for housing, businesses and services. Second area is housing affordability and homelessness. I support the mixed use zoning, which allows people to find services near where they live without having to travel large distances, saving them time, money and relieving congestion and associated pollution. Again, this is especially helpful for those 30% of Boiseans who don't drive. Also, this allows many options for people of different situations and socioeconomic groups to find the kinds of housing that they need and potentially near where they work and their family. I appreciate also the city's forward looking encouragement for EV charging for multifamily situations. As we see more growth in electric vehicles, those who rent will need access to home charging as well. And those of electric vehicles will not only help Boise with its plan to become net zero, but will help all of us improve our health by having cleaner air. And I thank you all for this opportunity to provide input and for all the work you've done to craft this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Is August here? Ashley Prince? John McDaniel? Jeff Reynolds? Jeff Wardle? And then after Jeff Wardle, we will have Jennifer Dempsey. If you're here, please head on this way. So I know you're here. Virgil Clark, Julianne Donnelly Sewell and Joseph Bankard.
Ben Mayor, before.
Yep.
And maybe before Jeff gets started, I just wanted to kind of put a pin in something before I forgot. And that's if we could just have staff maybe follow up later about the testimony about the area, airport influence area overlay and the, the noise exposure map. It would be nice to be able to ask some questions in the future, but not, not right now.
Sure. And then I noticed that there are a couple of hands online, so we'll check in after the first couple of people have come up on deck. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Jeff Wardle. My address is two fifty one East Front here in Boise. I'm here in support of this and our firm sent a letter in support of the zoning rewrite. Is it perfect? No. Are there things that are going to have to be addressed? Yes. Is the conversion to some of our new zones going to be a challenge at times? Yes, it will. But what does this code do? This code recognizes that housing is housing is housing. For far too long, we have looked at housing affordability through a single lens. And we have heard and you have heard the objections that this doesn't go far enough to guarantee affordable housing. And it's nice to see Mr. Myers from Givens Persley here as he and I handled the whole issue of what municipalities can do to provide requirements for affordable housing 15 years ago in the Blaine County area. And we recognize that municipalities are hamstrung. Having attempted to assist a jurisdiction adopt pro affordable housing provisions, the tools are very limited. So we can't look at this, that this is the be all end all. This is just unleashing tools that you have at hand and we need to continue to go down that path. Second of all, as I testified at the Planning and Zoning Commission and as we set forth in our comments, to those that claim that this process is rushed or is unplanned, those voices disregard the fact that 11 years ago, this community made a fundamental decision to fundamentally change its comprehensive plan. And Blueprint Boise is the plan that this community has embraced. And as a practitioner in this area, I'm regularly here, hearing neighbors talk about how important Blueprint Boise is. And I tell my clients, we have to embrace Blueprint Boise. But you cannot embrace Blueprint Boise and then claim that the intensification of housing or the provision of alternative housing is inappropriate. It's wholly inconsistent. Third, I was a little surprised at the testimony you heard from the Idaho Fair Housing Council on the conditional use permit provisions. I totally agree and understand their position when it comes to industrial uses on conditional use permits. But the fact of the matter is conditional use permits have repeatedly been utilized in this community as a shield wielded by neighborhood associations and others to object to alternative types of housing. Alternative types of housing that are only permitted pursuant to conditional use permits. If we're going to talk about social justice, then we have to talk about the fact that it's not just about Blue Valley. It's about Interfaith Sanctuary. It's about Boise Rescue Mission. It's about apartment projects or alternative types requiring those approvals. We recommend you approve this ordinance. Thank you.
I thank you. I just want to be, not asking for a comment, but just want to be clear because we've said this before and don't want people to think otherwise that we are not changing the rules around shelter in the zoning code rewrite.
That is absolutely correct. You are not, which is a lost opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, next, Virgil, you're great. I thought you came up when I, when I called your, that name, but I wasn't positive.
That was me.
Welcome.
Mayor and council, thanks for the opportunity to address you here today. My name's Virgil Clark. I live at Unhite Pine Place in southeast Boise. I oppose the modern zoning plan in its current form and ask that it be thoroughly and objectively reviewed, evaluated and revised to address public concerns such as those being brought forth today. I also asked that it not be considered for approval until the new district based council is in place. I offer one example of what, what this plan will do to the character integrity, livability and safety of Boise neighborhoods. A few years ago, state, county and city powers that be forced a group drug offender transition home into our neighborhood over our objections. Within two years, management abandoned the home to its own devices and it became an open flop house for transient drug addicts, those with mental issues and various other offenders, radically changing the character, livability and safety of our neighborhood. We reached out for help to our state legislators, state, county and city resources, including the Boise mayor and the Boise city council. No one was interested in or responsive to our plight. In short, we were only able to resolve this issue by invoking applicable zoning codes. Existing zoning codes were critical to removing this festering sore from our neighborhood. And now you are considering eliminating this powerful tool from the ability of neighborhoods to act in their own interest to maintain their character, livability and safety. This makes no sense for the families of Boise. I am skeptical that the many positive objectives of the plan can be delivered. We need to study the successes and failures of similar initiatives in other cities, better understand how the affordable housing will not be a mirage forever on the horizon, forever requiring just a little more investment. The downsides people have brought up at sessions such as this need to be identified and worked through. I urge you to take the time to more thoroughly understand and engineer this plan and its long term impact on our city. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so I think I saw Jeff Reynolds. There's some clerk. Will you call folks now that have raised their hands online?
I'm here. Are you ready for me to speak?
Yes, we can see and hear you.
Okay, great.
And, and actually I'll just, I don't want to get all the people online super excited. If I called your name and you're online, please raise your hand. Not, not everybody online. Great. Okay, thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. I really appreciate your time and do go through this process. Bluntly, I, I support the modern code rewrite, modernization. You know, the primary reason is my kids, like so many other folks here, so I won't, I won't belabor that point again, but I will say that puts simply more homes and more diversity of homes. And I don't think we're talking enough about the diversity of homes that this opens the door to means more affordability. And if I want my college age kids to be able to return to Boise, the reality is that this is a first step. And I, I really want to hone in on that part. This is a first step. I think anybody who dreams that this is going to solve the affordability crisis or that it can solve every issue with a, a bad neighbor or now or in the future is fooling themselves. The reality is we're just trying to make progress. Now, a couple of other quick points. People keep mentioning this idea of looking at other cities where this has worked and I agree with that in premise. But the other side of it is that we have communities right now in Boise where this has worked, you know, in the neighborhood, on my street, on my block. I'm in my basement right now. We have mostly single family homes. We have ADUs and we even have a duplex two doors down. And, you know, I'm even, I live in a small infill house. It's only 19 feet wide. A house that generally under our current code would be, well, it was difficult to build and would be even impossible in some places. And this leads to a variety of people and my, you know, different types of socioeconomic statuses and, and backgrounds. And, you know, even my daughter got her first job because the manager of a, of a cafe, a startup cafe in downtown Boise happened to be living in an ADU behind us. So, you know, I just really think this is really good for the social fabric. Now, I do want to say two things that concern me or things we need, I think we need to watch for. And the big one is, you know, the folks that are saying that this is forever, I think are wrong. We can, we do and make changes to our code all the time. But I would encourage a rigorous and intentional feedback loop that we create now and set the standards now. So over the next few years, we have a plan for how we're going to adapt and measure the efficacy, especially around the incentives. I think the incentives need to be checked for efficacy and, you know, if they're actually achieving their, their goals. And I'd love to see that built in. And lastly, I would just encourage, because this is a first step, that the city council and all of us citizens, you know, really get on the, look at the big picture. We can encourage walking and biking and transit with this, this coding rewrite, code rewrite. But the reality is until we get pedestrians able to walk across the street safely, you know, get lights timed correctly for pedestrians and bikes and not just cars. Until we get the Boise PD enforcing laws that, that protect pedestrian safety, safety, this will not, this will just be the villain if we don't deal with those bigger issues as well. So I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. There's nobody else that I've called that has their hands raised right now. So I'm going to go back to this. Jennifer Dempsey. Julianne, I did not see Julianne. Oh, she's here. Great. Julianne's online. Welcome. We can see you and hear you.
Thank you. I have three points I would like to make. One is a brief personal story. One is experience from work. And if I have enough time, I will add a comment about concerns I've heard around the canopy. Personal story, we need our young vibrant professionals to be able to afford to live here and right now they can't. A young woman who is our family's childcare provider who has lived independent of her parents for about six years, has gotten her degree, is joining Boise School District as a student teacher and has been a paraprofessional for a couple of years. She got her rent jacked over $300 and had to move back in with her parents in Nampa in order to be able to continue her career. That's not what we want. We want our teachers and our community members to afford to live here. So I fully support the zoning code rewrite and want to see more dense housing become available. Second, as a work observation, I've worked for over 12 years. And one of the services I've been involved in is finding housing for unhoused people. For those speakers who have shared tonight how long they've lived in homes, you know, if owned their home for 20 years or 30 years, that's wonderful, but it is from a position of incredible, incredible privilege. Finding housing for people who are renting, particularly people who've struggled economically, has gotten exponentially harder in the last few years with deposits skyrocketing, income requirements skyrocketing, cosigner requirements skyrocketing, and even where there are cosigners, the additional requirement that cosigners have large amounts of personal property to put in to a cosigning agreement. It is so hard to find affordable rental space in our wonderful home. And I want to make it more available to others. Last comment on, I've heard a lot of concerns from other speakers about loss of trees, loss of green space. I found the loss of farmland statistics to be very compelling, that we actually need to get more dense to preserve our wild spaces. And I would say well planned, more dense housing will give us more wild spaces than gigantic houses on gigantic lots that people who work here can't afford. Thank you very much for your time and I strongly support the zoning code rewrite. Thank you.
Thank you, Julianne. Joseph Bankard. Sam Crawford. Mark Nagel. Christina Bruce Benyon. All right, Christina's online. Oh, and are you coming up? Are you one of the names? Great. Come on up on deck and then you're after Christina. Oh, I hope you're not driving.
I'm not driving. I'm in a car. Someone else is driving. Hi, Christina Bruce Benyon. I live at 5608 North Catalway. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. And as others have said, really appreciate the in-depth and deliberative process you're undertaking on this zoning code rewrite. I am in support of it. It is really decades overdue. I'm a longtime resident of the Treasure Valley and currently work as the Executive Director of the Wasserman Center for Human Rights. The work that we do at the Wasserman Center is human rights education. But the ultimate goal of our work is to foster communities that are committed to creating a sense of belonging for all residents. Housing access and choice are fundamental to feeling like you belong somewhere and are really critical elements in the health and wellbeing of an individual or family. However, many housing zoning policies have historically worked against creating belonging by intentionally creating separation and othering through practices like redlining and exclusionary language in housing deeds that we are still working to rectify decades later. Here in Boise, in the past, areas like the River District were created through redlining and then eventually largely demolished to make way for commercial and other development, which ends up being a double whammy for families living in that area. The long-term consequences of denying people access to stable housing options can actually be generational in terms of wealth, equity and belonging. Even though we now have many legal protections against overt discrimination in housing, we still see efforts to exclude people from housing and neighborhoods, whether they are New Americans, families with children, seniors, LGBTQ, unhoused, low income renters or others. These efforts can intentionally or unintentionally be supported by zoning codes. So we need codes that are more inclusive and aim to increase housing options for broader range of residents. Boise has every opportunity to use every tool it has available to create a vibrant, affordable and inclusive city in part through its housing zoning policies. I like to imagine a city where neighborhoods include a variety of people, businesses and affordable needed housing solutions. These type of neighborhoods break down barriers and build a community of belonging. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. All right, come on up.
Hello, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Sam Crawford. I live at, I currently rent at 1413 West Camel's Back Lane. And I am the housing specialist at Agency for New Americans or Refugee Settlement Agency here in Boise. I came here to speak as a resident and someone who works very closely with one of Boise's most vulnerable populations to find rentals here in town. And I just wanted to come speak in favor of the rezoning, the coding, the zoning rewrite. I apologize. I think that the rewrite would greatly increase the amount of available rentals and available affordable rentals for our city's residents. And I think the addition of more ADU units and multifamily units in this town would vastly impact the the ability of our residents to be adequately housed. Right now, I run into a lot of difficulties and challenges, housing folks, based on the rental qualifications for a lot of properties here. And even for a lot of the affordable and low income properties that are available, the limited ones that are available. And so I think having more private renters out there available, folks who are able to kind of work with our clients and our residents who need housing and don't follow such strict qualifications would be very, very vastly beneficial for the folks that I work with and the other residents of our town. I can also speak to my experience. I recently moved back here. I grew up in this town. I call this place my home. I moved back here last year after 10 years away and finding a unit for me to live in was incredibly difficult and finding something within my budget, it was nearly impossible. I was unemployed at the time. I didn't have a good credit. And so I was very privileged to have family members that were able to cosign for me. But that is not the case for many of our residents here. And so I just wanted to speak in favor of the rewrite in order to hopefully benefit the folks who are coming here, new to our town, and those of us who have called this place our home for our entire lives. Thank you.
Sam, thank you for your testimony and thank you for your work. On a separate note, we've been talking a lot about rental protection and I'd be really interested in your experience about that. So I don't know if you can contact the city or myself, but please share that experience as you try to help refugees settle in our community and some of the challenges. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo some of the same things. I appreciate your work in the nonprofit sector and for speaking for a very specific portion of our population that this might affect. So thank you for testifying today and also welcome to the Leg Injury Club at City Hall. It seems to be infecting all of us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I, Mark Nagel, just want to make sure that Mark didn't come again. Kristen Baumchen, Baumchen. Janelle Holt, Katie McAnally, Mallory Bjorky. Since you're closest, come on up. Just let us know your name. Thank you all for coming towards the front. Appreciate it. Kristin Donovan and Yeva Baraxa. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Katie McAnally. I am a citizen of Boise in the Southeast End and Community Engagement Manager for Jesse Tree. I am a supporter of the zoning code rewrite. In December of 2019, I quit my job and went back to school. I began working downtown. I was working downtown at a bank and I didn't like what I was seeing. I was signing five to 10 cashier's checks a day for people from out of state purchasing houses for cash. At the same time, I was seeing more and more people experiencing homelessness. The wealth disparity in our community was apparent and has only gotten worse since then. I saw that our community was facing rapid growth and was not prepared to deal with the effects. I wanted to do what I could, so I went back to school in the School of Public Service at Boise State University. I met some incredible scholars studying housing in the Treasure Valley and beyond. And through those connections, I found a position at Jesse Tree, where I've been able to actively apply what I learned. Throughout my experience studying and working in housing over the last three and a half years, the most important thing that I have learned is that Boise has a community of experienced, smart, talented and passionate housing experts working on every aspect of the housing crisis. They all understand that the housing crisis is a complex issue and that the solution must be equally varied, creative and adaptable. This is what the zoning code offers. The ability for our city to adapt to growth and change in real time. The bottom line is that until we have housing stock that matches the economic diversity of our community, we will continue to experience rising eviction rates, more people experiencing snus and higher runs. Our hands tied by an outdated zoning code written to serve a community that no longer exists. We keep pushing this off and in the meantime, growth continues to happen. And people are upset because they're seeing the negative effects of this growth that our city has not been prepared for. We cannot stop people from choosing to live in Boise. I was lucky enough to be born and raised in Boise or in Idaho. And if I hadn't been that lucky, I certainly would have moved here. Our city is special. I'm grateful to count myself amongst the incredible housing advocates working hard to keep our city special. We have the knowledge to solve the housing crisis, but we need the tools to do our jobs. Please pass the zoning code rewrite. I see that I have a little bit of time left. I wanted to add. My husband and I are purchasing a home here in Boise. We're very excited. We're able to purchase a home for $175,000 because it is a rotting mobile home with a poor floor and bad insulation. It's terrible for our allergies. It's basically killing us, but we get to stay in Boise. And I'm excited about that. And I'm disgusted that I'm excited about that. And we can do better for our community.
Katie, thank you for your testimony and also thank you for the partnership that Jesse Tree provides the city. But importantly, the services that you provide our residents. Appreciate it.
Of course. Thank you.
All right, I've got to take, we were going to have to take a break in 10 minutes. But I'm looking at four people that I called up, so we'll go with the four of you. Just come on up, starting on the left. We'll go down the line.
Everyone, my name is Yova Varaxa. I work for the International Rescue Committee as a community advisor serving Ukrainian refugees. I'm in support of the zoning code and I work at the address 7291 Franklin Road. Today, I would like to talk about the problems I see clients we serve face due to the complex housing market in Boise. Ukrainian refugees face several challenges in the US, but the biggest challenge that impacts their wellbeing daily is affordable housing. Federal obstacles like getting a social security number and state obstacles such as getting work authorization are obstacles out of our reach. But you all at the local Boise level have the ability to help families with daily struggles. In the past few weeks, I've been working with a Ukrainian family with three children, one of them being a newborn and one of them being disabled. Working with this family daily, I see the amount of effort that they put in to just stay afloat with simple things like clothes and medical attention for their children. Their lease is ending in a month, but without a high credit score, extensive rent history and ability to make three times the amount of rent, the search is nearly impossible. Therefore, this family decided to stay at the same property for a couple more months, paying about $2,000 a month while they search for a cosigner and other options. This family's struggles are a direct result of a complex housing market in Boise. Through updating the zoning code, you give this family a chance of a safe life. You might ask why these people have to come to Boise, but unlike immigrants, refugees don't really have a choice. Moving to a foreign place is difficult, but Boise doesn't have to make it impossible. I would also like to speak on my behalf, Yeva Varaxa, a Ukrainian immigrant who has lived in the United States for over seven years. In the past months, my previous rent contact was not renewed by my landlord due to construction. And unlike a lot of people in their early twenties, I have no support, no supportive family in my life who would be able to sign for me or help out when I'm short on rent. I'm alone. Taking a look at the Boise market, I knew I would have limited options because I would not have the luxury of a parent to help me out. Living in the US for seven years, having a full-time job, having a high credit score and rent history, I have very limited options in finding myself a place and had to settle for one of the only alternatives we offer to the clients we serve. By implementing the zoning changes, I would have, I would not have to hold my breath every time that I go to pay rent. I do not want to leave Boise because I love this place and I love people that live here. I want to give back to the community that is so welcoming. And I am asking you to help me start living and not surviving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And also thank you to you and your colleague for the service that you provide our residents as well. Appreciate it.
Hi. Hello, everyone. I'm Mallory Bjork. I am an employment specialist with the International Rescue Committee at 729 West Franklin Road, as well as being a resident here of Boise myself at 137 East Mallard Drive. My role at the IRC is to help refugees find their first jobs after coming to Boise. This can be incredibly gratifying experience, helping folks begin to build the foundation for their livelihoods here in our beautiful community. My job can also be incredibly frustrating seeing firsthand the obstacles that the clients that we serve have to overcome in order to initiate their lives being productive citizens. Obstacles like poor public transportation and unaffordable housing makes it nearly impossible for the clients we serve to find a permanent address to settle at, let alone sustain reliable transportation to and from work. These folks want nothing more than to start giving back to Boise, but these barriers can be very difficult to overcome. If the zoning code in Boise is updated, this would allow for clients that we serve to have a better chance of overcoming the obstacles they face and becoming self-sufficient citizens of the Boise community more quickly by having access to affordable housing, public transportation and the preservation of bike paths to ensure multiple ways for them to get to their employment. There was a testimony in dissent of updating the code recently stating that the Boise neighborhoods, as they are currently, are the American way of life. The zoning code in Boise as it stands now only allows for a select few to enjoy this lifestyle while others, birthright citizens and refugees alike, suffer the consequences from the obstacles that it creates. As a city that boasts of being welcoming to everyone, updating the zoning code would help all folks in the community achieve their own kind of livelihood and American way of life, not just a select few, which is something I believe we all deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mallory.
Good evening. Thank you for your public service and for taking our comments. My name is Janelle Holt and I live in the East End. There are serious issues with your upzone plan and I do not support it. A young woman came to my door last week spreading disinformation. She was on the payroll of the Legalized Homes campaign and the first thing she told me was the rewrite won't affect you. I don't know how else to say this, but this is a lie. I live in an R1C neighborhood of mostly one-story homes, fewer than 1,800 square feet in size. With this upzone, any homes can be razed, including our 75-plus year old trees, there goes the canopy, and replaced by two, yes, two three-story duplexes 40 feet tall with minimal to no required onsite parking for the eight potential cars, not to mention 12 more garbage cans. We are all vulnerable to this gutting of existing neighborhoods despite the city's intense marketing campaigns insistence that the rewrite is limited to corridors. This is spin and disinformation. Mayor, you texted me that your dream is for your children to be able to come home from college and buy a home. How will this be possible if you destroy working class neighborhood homes and build rental units? You are not supporting homes. You are supporting developers and absentee landlords. You are creating a class of renters excluding those of lower income, a long-held tradition. You are creating a class of renters excluding those of lower income, a long-held tradition in Boise, unfortunately. With any luck, your children will come home from college and maybe be able to pay for an expensive apartment. The upzone has been highly marketed as a solution to the affordable housing crisis in Boise. Yes, we need affordable housing, no doubt. Promoting it in this way is at best naive and at worst just plain false. Statistics show that the majority of residents in need of affordable housing here are those who earn 80% of the median income for Boiseans. The upzone will not result in affordable housing for this group. It will only provide a small number of dwellings for those making 120% of the median income. A 240-square-foot studio apartment in my neighborhood goes for $1,100 a month. If you put an apartment building in that neighborhood, there is no way people are going to be paying affordable rent. It will be high-expensive rent in my neighborhood. In addition, who for the next 50 years will oversee these suggested rent caps built into your plan? If high-density housing resulted in affordability, apartments in downtown Boise would now be affordable, and we all know they are not. New construction is naturally more expensive to rent than existing apartments. Pitching the upzone as a solution to affordable housing is just more spin. The big winners are the absentee investors and landlords and developers who have no connection to our neighborhoods they exploit. Property values increase and the resulting increased taxes make Boise Boise more money as they push out working-class homeowners like me who cannot afford to pay their property taxes. Yes, we need solutions. We need solutions for everyone. What is the rush? I'm asking you to hold your vote until there is democratic representation on the council that will give voice to all of us who will be affected by the upzone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kristin is next.
Hello, my name is Kristin Bomschen. Thank you. There you are. Thank you for your service and for your time here this evening. I live in the newer East End neighborhood, which is 75 years old. Our lots are small, the neighborhood is full, and the streets are lined with parked cars every night. We are not protected with historic districting or any CCNRs. We rely on the city to protect our hood. Okay, but our hood is on the block. What I oppose about this rewrite is the rewrite is how easily a five-to-eight-unit, 40-foot-tall complex can be built in our neighborhood or a 12-bed bed and breakfast with less than half the necessary parking could slip in next door without any input from us, the neighborhood. The zoning website says this modern code will protect the character of our unique neighborhoods and create opportunities for homes at Boise prices across the city, so our kids can return home to start their lives in a place they grew up. But this rezone proposal drips with pro-development for the benefit of developers and investors. It does not benefit our unique neighborhoods, and our kids can return only if they're willing to be long-term renters in some multiplex with off-site owners and investors. The rezoning targets select R1C neighborhoods, but only those with lots deemed subdivisible by planning and zoning. The housing that could be provided will not be affordable. In fact, the code said homes can be resold at 130% of the scale used to determine affordability. Rental fees only have to meet a small percentage of these affordability formulae. So how is this benefiting our children? Again, no affordable homes are provided, only long-term rentals with inadequate parking. This is not legalizing homes, as the slogan says. It is mandating our children to always pay rent as it destroys the integrity of our old neighborhoods. These rezones make sense for new areas developed in Boise. Wonderful ideas. I love the ideas of what you're proposing here and what people are telling us tonight. And there are some, but shoving multi-unit giants into these selected old neighborhoods just creates an investor's paradise and a future slum. I ask that you slow this down, allow the changes to the old neighborhoods to be more in keeping with what's there. And don't forget about the people who have made Boise what it is, not what the investors and developers want. You are our only hope. However, I understand that the mayor has recently appointed two city council members. These were not elected by the people. This is not citizen representation. Only elected members should be have the power to determine the people's fates. And changing the face of our old and established neighborhoods is affecting our fate. This drastic zone change that has the potential to create such upheaval should be decided by the people, or at least in the minimum, by the representatives elected by those people.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are now taking a break until about six. We have at max an hour left, just like less than a page left of folks to testify. So just to be clear, we're gonna finish tonight. If you've signed up on a piece of paper, I'm calling you tonight. Welcome back. We had some residents down on the plaza talking about pools, so I wanted to go visit with them, which is, and I told them I would go be there at 5:45, so that's why we took the break when we did. Appreciate everybody. Back. All right. Tiffany Deems already spoke. I'm gonna read the next list names on my list. If I had read your name and you didn't speak before the break, just remind me and you can jump right up. Oh, I'm gonna read the next couple and please move this way. Melody Laddy, Jacob Anderson, Josh Kramer, Sophie Spanbauer, and Lorinda Williams. And if you're online, if I read your name, just please raise your hand. Anybody in person from that group of names I just read? Anybody online? All right. Oh, sorry. Oh, great. We'll take the person that's here in person and then who's online first?
Madam Mayor, it's just Jacob Anderson online.
Great.
Hi. Hi, my name is Sophie Spanbauer. Thank you, Mayor McLean and City Council for providing this opportunity for me to speak today. I live at 600 South Shoshone Street and I'm here to testify today in favor of the zoning code rewrite. I was born and raised in Boise and I'm currently a senior at the University of Idaho. As a lifelong Boise resident, I look forward to one day owning my own home in Boise and continuing to be a part of our unique community. However, in recent years, I, like many other Boise residents, have watched housing prices and rent drastically increase. I never dreamed that I would have to consider leaving my hometown for the sake of affordability, but unfortunately, that has become a stark reality for me and many others just like me. As a fourth-generation Idahoan, I am deeply connected to the state and want to have access to affordable housing. I have currently worked for the last month for Neighbors for Boise and have gotten to talk to many residents and renters about the upcoming changes to the modern zoning code. And I've found like a lot of the other canvassers that Boise residents are really in favor of a diverse living environment and living with different types of people, different income types, and I really support that. I'm in favor of the modern zoning code because of the increase in diverse styles of homes that will be legal to own and rent in Boise, such as bungalow courts or fourplexes. The modern zoning code will also protect farmlands and open spaces by curbing urban sprawl on a more organized and equitable level than we have previously seen. I believe that the implementation of the modern, sorry, I believe that the implementation of the modern zoning code will create a more inclusive, affordable, and connected Boise, and not just for the next couple of years, but for generations to come after me as well. That is why I support the zoning code rewrite. Thank you so much to Mayor McLean and Council, and a huge thanks to all the staff who have worked so hard on this. I appreciate your time and I'm happy to stand for questions.
I have one question. Are you related to the author, Tom Spanbauer?
Maybe.
Oh, I see somebody behind you saying yes. I love his writing.
I will tell him that if I figure out who he is.
Thanks for being here, Sophie. Okay, there's somebody's online. Jacob Anderson, welcome. We can see you.
Thank you. My name is Jake Anderson. I live at 1022 East McKinley Street in the East End. I'm here to support the modern zoning code. I bring two perspectives to this. 10 years ago, I was a grad student at BSU and a renter. Now I'm a faculty member and homeowner. My opinions here are purely my own, based on my own experience. I'm going to start from a student's perspective. BSU students are an important part of our community. I talk to students about their housing challenges a lot. 10 years ago, when I was a student, I lived in a three-bedroom apartment. The combined rent that my two roommates and I paid together back then is more or less what these days a single resident of a three-bedroom unit might pay is their share of rent. Think back to when you were in your twenties and imagine how your life would be different if your rent doubled or tripled. Most students I knew back then lived within an easy bike ride or even walking distance from campus, which was good for our health, prevented pollution and congestion, and saved us the cost of driving and parking. It was also required for the many students who didn't have cars. Living near campus was affordable and common back then, but now a lot more people want to live in Boise and the current zoning code is not allowing the housing supply to keep up. These days, some students still do live near campus, but it's increasingly unaffordable and becoming less common. I've always been proud of BSU being a good deal for students compared to other schools. 10 years from now, on our current path, will we still be a good deal considering where the cost of housing is going? If we don't increase the housing supply, I think the answer is no. The other side of this is the cost of buying a house, which hits young faculty like me. After a six-month painful search last year, I did manage to find a house I could barely afford. 10 years ago, it would have cost under half the price that I paid. I like it here and have family reasons to stay, so here I am. But the more sensible choice would have been to leave and put down roots somewhere else. How can we expect to be an attractive choice for young faculty when house prices are so unreasonable here? With a clear conscience, 10 years from now, will I be able to tell job candidates that moving here is a wise move? Again, if we don't increase the housing supply, I think the answer is no. For sure, my experience is very university-focused, but the affordability crisis applies broadly. How can we expense any of our community's institutions to thrive if their people can't afford to live here? We have a big housing supply-demand mismatch that we need to fix by increasing supply, and supply is constrained by our archaic zoning code. City planning has come a long way since the 60s, but Boise's code is stuck in a sprawled-out, car-centric past that leaves too many of us behind, especially young people. I don't think buy your house 10 years ago is a good plan for affordability. The proposed zoning code rewrite would be a big improvement by creating opportunities to increase the housing supply in Boise. The city has been working on this for years. It has done its job of including the public in the process. The need is urgent and we're almost at the finish line. I urge the council to adopt the proposed zoning code without delay. I'm proud of my city. I care about young Boiseans who are having a hard time now. And I don't want to watch my city and its institutions wither due to a self-inflicted housing affordability crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Let me check. Is Josh Kramer here? Is Lorinda Williams online? Okay. Melody Laddy? Ben Cassiano? Gwene? Gweneel? Domal? Up, two people, raise your hands. Three. Gweneel is here. Wonderful. And then we've got Annika Bennett, Miranda Adams, Nancy Shaw, and Nisa Jensen.
Hello?
We'll have you go after. Is it Gweneel or Gweneel?
That was perfect pronunciation. Hi, I'm Gweneel Domal. I live at 1061 South Garden Place on the Boise bench. And I'm here wearing two metaphorical hats. The first one is a newly homeowner. We just purchased our home in October. And the main reason we chose this home was the bikeable and walkable scores of these homes. And that's how we were choosing choosing our homes when we were purchasing. And we were very lucky to be able able to afford a home that was bikeable to work for both of us and to be surrounded with a fantastic community here. So I wanna make sure that the zoning code that we're supporting today continues to enhance bike infrastructure and walkable infrastructure for both the bench but everywhere in Boise, as my friends don't always live near me. And then my second hat is a student researcher here at Boise State University working towards farmland protection and preservation together with David Anderson from the American Farmland Trust, whom you talked to earlier this afternoon. Idaho in general is losing six square miles of farmland every year, and especially so in the Treasure Valley. Idaho's identity is deeply rooted to agriculture, the culture that people hold very close and dear in this state. And so this modern zoning code is really going to help prevent more urban sprawl and protect these farmlands that are not only feeding the world but through urban farmland, feeding us as a local community. And so I urge you to support this new code without delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hello, City of Boise staff. Thank you for your work on this project and for hosting space this week for public testimony. My name is Annika Bennett and I'm a resident at 2218 West Overland Road in 05 zip code. I am absolutely for adopting this new zoning code. I'm a fifth-generation Idahoan. I was the fourth generation to graduate from Boise High School, and I recently graduated with my bachelor's degree from Boise State University. I'm 20 years old and I've been a renter for almost three years now. The first apartment I moved into in 2020 was at 2001 West Boise Avenue. Less than a year after I moved in, I received notice that the developer had bought the property. We were forced to move out. The building was demolished and all tenants, including myself, really struggled to find housing. I spent hundreds on applications until I finally found an apartment. The rent is $200 higher per person per month than my previous unit of the exact same size. And my current home is a seven-year-old building where we've had sewage flooding, multiple pest infestations, and we lost heat for two weeks in December, all of this due to it being a really outdated building. The previous unit that I lived in on Boise Avenue has since been replaced by a three-story complex that costs literally twice as much per room compared to my old unit. I worked two simultaneous jobs all throughout college to afford rent while also taking the maximum number of credits to get through school faster because school and rent at the same time is super expensive. All of my friends share this experience. I don't know anyone my age who's renting who isn't struggling to find housing. It's anything, finding anything under $700 a month, even with roommates, is basically impossible at this point. Our wages are worth less every year as rent increases. And if rent keeps going up and housing scarcity continues, myself and my friends will be forced to move out of our hometown. A main part of the reason I support this new zoning code is because I want more incentives for developers and landlords to include affordable housing in their plans. I also support the new zoning code because I want more incentive for people to bike, walk, and use public transportation. I work full-time as a bike mechanic at Boise Bicycle Project, and I use my bike as my main form of transportation. I see firsthand every day the many ways in which our citizens utilize bikes for survival, for transportation, for recreation, for the betterment of our air quality and our environment. I want to see more infrastructure in our city that promotes walking and biking and decreases the number of cars on our roadways. I think of the Joni Mitchell lyric, "They paved paradise and put up a parking lot." I want fewer places to park and more places to play. For these reasons and many more, I hope City Council will adopt, will vote to adopt this new zoning code. Thank you again to the staff for all of your hard work. I really appreciate your time and energy. Thank you.
Thanks, Annika. Let's go with, I saw somebody online. Madam Mayor, we also have Nisa Jensen. Great. Nisa, welcome.
Hi. Thanks for giving us all the chance to speak today. My name is Nisa Jensen. I'm speaking on behalf of the Boise Ada County Homeless Coalition. We are in favor of the new zoning code. First and foremost, it is important that we bring our archaic zoning code into the 21st century. It has prevented innovation and equity in housing, effectively excluding people who need more affordable options. The new code creates unique zones along high-traffic corridors, allowing for more efficient use of public transportation. It incentivizes more creative use of lots to accommodate a variety of household types. It seeks to prevent sprawl and protect open spaces that are important to us all. As a coalition of agencies working with the lowest-income households, we recognize that the modern zoning code isn't going to solve issues for the folks we serve. However, it will bring our city into the modern age. We urge you to pass this new zoning code with the admonition to continue funding and creating housing for the lowest-income citizens who are at the mercy of government programs. Thank you.
Thanks, Nisa. There's, now we've got Joe Evans, Tori Dole, Robert Elliott, and Kesley Felton. Anybody else that I just named, called? Are you here? So we'll check online. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you, everybody, for this time, Madam Mayor, City Council staff. The amount of work you've put into this. The amount of work you've put into this up-zone has been incredible, the amount of work that's been done, the modifications, the ability for the mixed zones, being able to do the commercial. There's a lot of this that is really valuable with a lot of potential for what the city represents as far as creating homes for the new Americans that come here and so on. My big concern right now at the moment is that there's too much low-hanging fruit. This is the stuff that we are likely to see more displacement of that affordable housing before there is replacement. We don't have protections for the communities on the bench, which right now is the most affordable communities in Boise. We're averaging somewhere around $1,200 there in relationship to $1,400, $1,500 in several other places around Boise, Idaho right now. So in addition to that, we have the new American communities there. We have two mosques that represent there. As far as at-risk individuals, we have three methadone clinics within the Central Branch area. The number of ethnic delicatessens and markets in the area, which are largely able to continue to operate simply because of the affordable commercial properties that are there right now. The up-zone will cause all of those areas to increase in rental prices, property prices, and price a lot of those businesses out of an ability to operate and continue to support the communities in that area, unless there is replacement before the displacement. These areas are going to be particularly important, especially if we intend to continue to support the refugee resettlement programs through the IRC and several other organizations. We want to be able to see the diversity in our ethnic community here. I mean, we speak 95 languages in Boise, right? Ninety-five. We've been accepting refugees, new Americans since 1970s. Thai boat people, you know, the latest, we've heard them speak here today, Ukrainian resettlement, emergencies. If we don't have that affordable housing in existence now, before it's displaced, we're going to continue to run into the homeless problem, and it's going to accelerate until we finally reach saturation, which at this point, we don't know how far down the road that is going to be. We need the missing middle. We need an ability to create housing in the mixed areas before we sacrifice all of those low-income housings, middle and affordable housing that currently exist on the bench. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joe. So did we have Tori Dole, Robert Elliott, Kesley Felton, or Rosemary McLennahan? McLennahan, excuse me. Rosemary, come on up. And then we've got Brent Mathieu. Kesley, oh, Kesley's on here three, twice, unless there's a Kesley senior and junior, a Rory Felton, and a Richard Fritzley. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Rosemary McLennahan, and I live at 3300
I can hear you, but not in the mic, so.
Rosemary McLennahan, I live at 3300 North Hawthorne Drive. I have concerns about the proposed zoning code rewrite and recommend any approval wait until after the November elections and a voter-approved council is seated. I live in one of the three districts that did not have the opportunity to vote for my representative. It is also one of the three districts that will be significantly impacted by the ZCR. If the ZCR is approved, the state street corridor will not be recognizable in a few years. The 70-foot structures with a step down to 40 feet will negatively impact the surrounding neighborhoods. As Mr. Keen stated in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the ZCR is not meant to solve affordability issues. Its purpose is to increase density and use of public transportation. The February City Council Public Hearing for the six-story, 130-unit apartment building on Ash Street is an example. Affordable fourplexes will be demolished. Developers proposed 13 affordable units at 100% of AMI. If required, to add those two more affordable units at 60% of AMI, the owner would just reapply after the ZCR was approved, and no affordability would be required. The ZCR includes incentives, however, they are not requirements. Demolishing existing affordable housing will not lead to new affordable units taking their place. The ZCR does not address infrastructure within the city. The bus system is currently looking at funding options necessary to provide services. Public transit routes in Boise are already limited, and recent plans to eliminate some of the current routes will not serve all city residents that are expected to rely on public transportation. What about the additional cost of police and fire services that are not considered in the ZCR? The Boise school system is a separate, is separate from the city, however, there will be significant impact to schools as the city grows. Will the developers have any responsibility for these infrastructure needs? These expenses, including the cost of utility upgrades, will likely be passed to city residents. The ZCR reduces public input. There will be reduced neighborhood notifications, comment opportunities, public hearings, and the appeal process. Zoning decisions are made at each level, and there's little room for review or appeal, which could increase expensive legal action. Proposed changes in the CUP criteria would allow a project with public benefit to avoid mitigating impacts and project mitigation measures to which is practicable. This will make any project much more difficult to deny or condition. This more than opens the door for any project to claim public benefit and ignore any material negative impacts not easily mitigated. These are only a few of my concerns about the ZCR. As areas are paved over and buildings added, we lose the unique neighborhoods. The plan to preserve trees, green space, and the aquifer may be at risk with increased value of the land. Infill is not always good. Boise can do better.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rosemary.
I have a question for you. You made one reference to CUPs, and I was trying to figure out if there was a specific way that you were wanting those to be used, or a specific place that you were wanting those to be used.
I think that they need to be used in a lot of different areas, and I think that the code kind of eliminates those options. I think they need, I think what, you know, getting a CUP should be a little bit difficult, and I think a lot of the developments need to have some of those as part of their approvals.
Great, thank you. And for those who don't know, that's a conditional use permit. Yeah, I did it too. I did it too.
I saw two people that I called online, maybe three. I saw Brent, Richard. Madam Mayor, we also have Robert Elliott online. Great, all right. Whichever. Just pick one. Let's do Robert Elliott first. Great.
Hello, can you see me and hear me?
Yes, we can see and hear you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Robert Elliott, and I live at 1037 West Hale Street, right next to the university. And I wanted to, overall, I'm in favor of the zoning code rewrite. The house I live in is a 400-square-foot ADU, which was legal to build in my part of town, but I realize is not legal to build in much of the rest of the city. When I testified at Planning and Zoning a few weeks ago, I heard one of my neighbors specifically call out my house as inadequate and subpar, and while I understand that it's not the right kind of living situation for everybody, I really enjoy it. It's more than enough room for my girlfriend and I, and we really love being able to live in a affordable house and be in a part of town where we can walk and bike to everywhere we want to get to. I ride my bike everywhere to go to work, to go to the gym, to go to the foothills. I just love being able to access everything without the need for a car, which brings me to my one issue with the proposed zoning code rewrite. And I don't think it goes far enough in with the parking. I would prefer a parking maximum rather than, you know, to, rather than what's currently proposed with, you know, the reduced minimums, I think that they should just either completely abolish the parking requirements or set maximum parking requirements to really limit what people can build with parking lots. Overall, I see them as a giant waste of space. I think it makes it more difficult to walk and bike places. And so that's my biggest issue. I just think that we should do more to promote walkability and bike access and really just make other modes of transportation a lot better. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. And now now we have Richard Fitzley. Richard Fitzley.
Can you hear me now?
We can kind of hear you.
Hello?
Hi, yep, we can hear you. You're just, your volume's low.
Okay.
Yep, better. Welcome.
Is that better? I'll get a little closer to my computer. My name's Richard Fritzley. I live at 3807 North Hawthorne Drive. You'll probably notice that you've had at least three residents of this street testify. We all live in the Sycamore overlay, the best place in the city, in my opinion. Unlike a comment from a council member tonight, the overlays really aren't protected like they're being advertised. You can still build a fourplex here. They did stop the original idea of subdividing these lots, which is good, but being allowed to be, build a fourplex with incentives is a distinction without a difference. I've lived in this area for 34 years now. I've lived in my current location for over 20. It took me 10 years to find a house to, place to buy here and build here. It's an important wildlife corridor. It's a great habitat. And I've heard people say on previous testimony in PNC that it shouldn't exist. Yet, if we want to talk about open space, we want to talk about bikeability, we want to talk about walkability. My neighborhood is probably one of the most walkable in the city, if not the most walkable, and yet we're one of the least dense. I'm not against density. Density is necessary in some areas. The trouble with the zoning rewrite as it's written now is you're carpet bombing the city with massive changes that you have no idea how they're going to turn out in the end, when you need be using laser-guided ammunition. You know, the massive amount of change that takes place of this is beyond most people's comprehension. I have a background as a civil engineer. I'm a professional engineer. I have an MBA from a top five MBA program in the country, or I graduated in the top 10 of my class. I worked on a Housing Affordability Index when I was getting my MBA in finance, specifically real estate finance, to develop the first statewide housing affordability index in the country. I'm pretty familiar with detailed planning and business development. There are a lot of factors that go into housing affordability, and I think the city thinks they're pulling on a rope to help pull housing affordability forward. What they're doing is you're pushing the rope. You have no leverage here whatsoever. You might get density. Whether you get affordability is going to be a crapshoot. You need to go back and look at a targeted approach and zone in on specific areas of the city that make sense. And final thing is, if you really want to have support and credibility, you need to wait till after the election so you have district representation, and you need to communicate differently, so you're not just drawing in overwhelming amount of advocacy groups, and you reach the real people of the city. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Richard, would you be open to a question?
Sure.
Great, thank you. So in the proposal for our zoning code, in order to build a fourplex in the Sycamore overlay, it would need to have two affordable units, and it would still need to comply with all of the the other requirements, all of the dimensional requirements. Can you kind of walk me through what your opposition would be to having a fourplex with two affordable units in your neighborhood?
As I mentioned before, I spent 10 years looking for this area. You are taking away from, in my particular case, and I think you're doing this across the city, the whole aspect of why people bought here and why you're having so many people from the overlay oppose this. We bought into a large lot community that, like myself, many of us have still have private wells. We have flood irrigation. A third of my lot in the back part is the garden area. You know, I've had 18 deer in my backyard as recently as this last fall. You put in a duplex, or even a duplex, but especially a quadruplex next to me, that's going to utterly change the whole nature of the neighborhood, and I'll emphasize nature there, too, because the wildlife is not going to have the corridor. They're not going to have the bed-down areas. They're not going to have my garden to come eat freely at. You know, the fences are going to go up between lots where many of us don't have fences now. It will drastically change that, and I didn't have time to mention, but your incentives are totally misguided. As an example, my house is built with insulated concrete forms in the basement, suctionally insulated panels in the walls, very energy-efficient, very affordable energy-wise. You're stipulating electricity, which is not affordable because it's much more expensive than gas. There are other ways to reach energy efficiency, besides what you're dictating. And finally, incentives.
Mr. Fritzley, I'm sorry, you answered my question. I really appreciate it, and I think that you illustrated my point beautifully. Thank you.
Thanks. Brent Mathieu is next. Brent, I saw you. There you are. Welcome.
I've solved the tech problems in the moment. There have been many to get to this moment, but we'll let them go. Thank you, Mayor, and council members for this opportunity to speak to something that is very dear to my heart and I think to the lives of most people in Boise, particularly for seven generations to come. Seven generations to come is a phrase from the indigenous people that whatever we do, particularly in public policy, we should take into consideration how it's going to affect the people and the planet for seven generations to come. I am not an expert on zoning. What I am is I'm a Boise resident of over 31 years who owned the same piece of land, about a third of an acre, for that time. And my values have been to create and conserve soil, build trees, promote nature, protect wildlife, pollinators, build ponds. And I've done this with many mistakes, many regrets. I live on Plum Street, 4130 West Plum Street, and I would invite any city staff member or member of this council to come walk with me, my neighborhood on Plum Street, which is now in the transition zone between the state street corridor and the up-zone to R2. And I will share with you how this is going to impact myself and this neighborhood. I have multifamily developments at State and Arthur, at Fargo and Arthur, Dollar Point at Fargo and State has been developed. I can share with you how this impacts the neighborhood. I can share with you the very personal story of the removal of affordable housing directly east of me, which affects my privacy and my property. Sorry, I had a neighbor drop by. Basically, I can't speak to the complexity of this up-zone in three minutes. I'd like to end with a prayer of indication for your inspiration as the council to make the right decision. Te te melkuta. Te te melkuta. May you find the power of inspiration to serve the people and the planet in our need. Te te melkuta. It's translated as thy kingdom come. It's actually a poor translation. It means find the inspiration to lead the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Are there any Feltons online or in the room? Tori Dole? Okay. I see Elizabeth Carter has raised her hand a couple times. I haven't, I don't see you on the list, but if you are here to testify, go ahead. If I passed you over, I apologize. Okay, while we're waiting for that, Chelsea Harada. And then Eric Schulman, Jessie Lawson, I think we lost Chris Meyer. Welcome.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Chelsea Harada. I currently live in the Bora neighborhood. I was born and raised in Idaho. I grew up in Meridian, and on my eighteenth birthday, I moved to Boise. And I never looked back. Idaho is the only home I've ever known, and I've seen and experienced firsthand how growth can change and challenge us. My husband and I love Boise. We met here over ten years ago while both working downtown. Me as a barista, him as my favorite post shift bartender. We've built a life here with family, friends, hobbies, our favorite river, swimming spots, bike routes, coffee shops, food trucks, and antique stores. I've met a lot of other people in Boise, too. Maybe I've made your latte the Flying M, poured you a beer at the Boise Brewing, sold you a loaf of bread at the Boise Farmers Market, or met you at one of the aforementioned favorite coffee shops, food trucks, et cetera. I feel lucky to call this place home and be part of our community. I've lived in the North End, East End, West Downtown, Central Bench, near BSU, and now the West Bench. My husband and I recently moved back up to the bench after living at our last home for about six years in a single family house near BSU. A few years ago, we started hearing from our neighbors about their intent to oppose plans for two different duplexes, including one right next door to us. They didn't want renters to ruin the feel, the character, and the property values of our block. We were surprised to hear the anti-renter sentiment because our neighbors were well aware that we too were renting. One neighbor shared that we weren't the kind of renters they were worried about. It's the other renters who are the problem. Despite protests from some of our neighbors, both modest duplexes went up and tenants moved in. And to be honest, very little changed. Our neighborhood was close enough to BSU to become overflow parking during games and big concerts. But even then, we could still find street parking near our home. Rather than becoming overgrown with weeds during the summer, the new duplexes had zero escape to front yards, and our new neighbors were respectful and far less disruptive than the existing frat house on the corner. As a renter, my place in the community I've loved so dearly feels uncertain. And the way I hear some folks talk about renters who make up over thirty percent of Boise concerns me. We all deserve a good, safe home, and renters are just as capable of being great neighbors and taking pride in their home as homeowners. Updating our zoning code to reallow the types of homes and businesses we've already had in places like the North End and East End and West End since the early nineteen hundreds will give more options for all of us, including renters. It's only one piece of the affordability puzzle, but I think it's an important one. I just want to add one more thing since I have about fifteen seconds. I know a lot of people have been really excited about the new districting system. Personally, I'm not. There's two seats in front of me that I got to vote on, and I will have one representative moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Eric Schulman? All right. Jessie Lawson? Oh, that's right. You raise your hand. And then we'll take somebody online. So if you could please tee them up. And then I'm moving on to the last sheet of paper, folks.
Greetings, Mayor McLean. City Council and staff really appreciate your service and your work on this. I'm really here just as an individual. I moved here in two thousand and six from Portland, Oregon, and was able to find affordable housing. I had a place to myself for about the first five years. It was awesome. I was paying like five fifty for a two bedroom duplex. And it was a great opportunity for me to, I was changing my life, you know, as far as focus and stuff like that. I got involved with Radio Boise and was a volunteer there, a programmer for years, had opportunities to work with the Boise Bison Project Shifting Gears Program. Love this city. Met my current wife here. She is amazing. She's lived here a lot longer than I have. But it's, I came here really to speak about the the struggle that human beings are facing and working class people. And I hear a lot of objections to the to the zoning rewrite. And I can tell you that those people are homeowners and that most of their friends are homeowners and they're upper middle class. And how do I know that? Because there's no empathy for the working class people of the city who can't afford to live here. So I've lost at least a half dozen friends and then probably twice that in a in my larger friend circle that had been forced out of the state completely because they just can't afford to live here anymore. So they've had to, knowing that they can't afford to live in Boise, they've had to seek opportunities elsewhere. I'm lucky enough that I recently doubled my income, got a new job, it's a union job. Really grateful for that opportunity. But even having my income doubled, it's still a struggle for my wife and I. And we're like, I'm, I know that I'm going to be successful in life and like, I'm going to continue to like grow and and be okay financially unless something crazy happens. But I worry about the people that don't have the same opportunities as me, right? So I doubled my income. How's the person that we're arguing for like the fifteen dollar an hour wage, right? Those people can't afford houses. They can't. You can't can't move nowadays. Like, I got forced out of the last place I was at. The most stressful thing that's happened to me since I quit drinking was trying to find a new place to live with that thirty days that I had to try to find a place for my wife and I. I make good money. And I pay my bills on time. I got good credit. My wife has great credit. It should not be a struggle to find a place to live. So, you know, really, we, I just want to come to speak to the struggle, the emotional toil that that so many people in Boise are struggling with, the, you know, the service workers. I believe this radical idea. I believe that somebody who works in Boise should be able to afford to live in Boise. It's pretty simple, but and I appreciate the work that you're doing. If anything, I would take it even further. I think we should have laws that limit the the increase in rent like over time. That would be a great thing for our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to ask you what trade you're part of, but it looks like your shirt says you're an ironworker.
Oh, no, this is actually a client. We're a member of United Food and Commercial Workers. I actually work at Lank's Union. We build mobile apps and websites for unions all over the country on all trades.
Oh, cool.
So talk to, we know affordable housing is a problem all over the country. It's not your fault. Private investors have been buying up twenty percent of the single family homes on the market since two thousand and eight, and so that's what's artificially increased home prices over the country.
Thanks, Jessie. Okay, somebody online.
Madam Mayor, I have Elizabeth Carter, and she'll be followed by Nina Schaefer.
Okay. We're going to try another person because we're getting down to the wire here while we try to figure out Elizabeth. Is it Lindsay Lotus? Is Lindsay still here? Mark Thacker? Another person from Leighton, Utah. That might have been Mark. Who's, oh, Elizabeth, stay there. Let's not lose you. Go ahead.
Okay, am I live?
You are live with a cute little dog.
I press all these buttons. I'm like, blur the background. I don't know what to do.
Okay, at least you're not a cat.
At least I'm not a cat. Yeah. I'm Elizabeth Carter, and I live at thirty eight oh eight North Mountain View Drive. Resident of the eight three seven oh four zip code for forty five years. Grew up as a kid and then wanted to move back to the same zip code. So yes, I I very much empathize with wanting to have homeownership. To speak to the last participant, I guess, and reach across the aisle is, I am a homeowner owner, and I would like to see more affordable housing for homeownership. Yes, renting is, I mean, I rented when I was in graduate school. I'm I'm not against it, but I think one of your previous speakers, was it Stacy Donahue, talked about her seventy nine year old neighbor who was being lured out of his house, living on social security. And I don't know the specificity of being able to write a code, but I would like to cut out that twenty percent that the last speaker spoke about of investors who really, they don't, they they want their write offs. They don't give a damn. And homeownership and affordable homeownership, I think, could happen with incentivized pocket sales. I really do think that older people want to, if they are going to sell their house, I think they would like to sell it to young people who want to own a home in with the rents going crazy, sky high. Gosh, why, why couldn't people be able to turn a mortgage, essentially what they're paying in rent? So I, I am against giving developers and investors carte blanche access to knocking down single family dwellings, the bungalows. I live up here on the bench and would like to see the people wanting affordability and to have the initiative to be able to move into those homes and and remodel remodel them and not have a developer grow up something that everyone keeps saying seventy five feet and forty feet. I don't want to see that. Possibly an idea here, again, a seventy nine year old who probably property taxes were were getting to. I thought that we could maybe put something in place like Proposition thirteen that California had that protected people who were original homeowners from being property tax increased out of their homes. I don't know if that's in the code or just trying to think of solutions. I agree with the Boise State professor and many of the others that if this is a fifty year old code.
Elizabeth, you're at time.
Okay, process.
Thank you.
Blow the process down. Thanks.
Your time. Thanks a lot. There's. And then what I'm going to do is I'm going to finish up the lists and the folks that are, and if anybody signed up in advance and is online, we'll take you. I'm going to finish the list otherwise of folks that are here in the room and anybody online that didn't sign up for today and ask you to come back tomorrow. All right.
Madam Mayor, the person online is Nina Schaefer.
Nina Schaefer.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
My name is Nina Schaefer, and I live at one one seven South dot Street. I am here to express my strong support for the zoning code rewrite, as seen by my great triple decker pin that you can find in other East Coast cities. I was born and raised here in Boise, and I am an alum from Boise State. I currently rent, and I've served on neighborhood associations in the past. My family all lives in and around Boise, and Boise is a place that I want me, my friends, and my family to have the option to stay. I think a lot of points that I wanted to talk about have been hit. One thing I want to bring up is I'm really interested in the departmental review committee that was brought up from the zoning code rewrite. I think this is going to be a really important step to just make sure that our projects are are well funded with infrastructure, making sure all other agencies are involved. And I think that's really an improvement that's not going to impact our our day to day lives as residents, but I think will make a lot of these projects a lot easier. I also want to touch on the importance of increasing inventory and variety of housing. I think more so hitting on that variety of housing. It's so important for for people in my generation to have some townhome options, some separate attached dwellings, whether they be condos. Typically, these are the ones that we can afford the most. Of my friends who have purchased in the last few years, all but one have been in townhomes, and yes, they do have private outdoor space, including grass. I also think increasing inventory is is going to improve our rental fees. Adding more competition in means that the fees that we see as renters today, we don't necessarily have to take if there's more competition out there. And I also think that increasingly on competition really decreases the amount of real estate investment that we see within homeownership. If there's more competition, it's something that they point out in their reports and SEC filings that they don't try to purchase housing in areas that have high competition of housing. And so adding that inventory and variety, I think, is really important. The next thing I wanted to hit on is the infill development that the new zoning code rewrite would allow and really focusing a lot of that on our transit corridors. I think it's really important to improve our transit corridors as much as we can, knowing that our state funding is limited to zero on that. And really, the expense of a car can really impact people's ability to afford a home or find a place in the neighborhood that they live. And then finally, I just wanted to commend the city staff for their work building this code. In my job, I work with development and affordable housing projects throughout North America, and I don't think I've seen any other city be as involved in this process. Some places, they might just be doing the redoing their zoning code update in one or two public meetings. So I really think the commitment that you guys have put into this code is is really commendable. Um, that's all I had. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Nina. Wait, was that Nina? Yeah, okay, sorry. Now we've got Preston Carter.
Hi, everyone. I'm Preston Carter, representing Intermountain Gas Company at six oh one West Bannock Street. Mayor and members of the council, Intermountain Gas recognizes and appreciates the efforts of all the stakeholders in this monumental undertaking. Intermountain Gas does have legal concerns with two provisions of the draft ordinance. These are addressed in detail in our comment letter. In broad terms, the draft ordinance classifies developments that meet all their energy needs using electricity or geothermal energy as an amenity for certain multifamily dwellings and as a condition for a waiver from density and other requirements for certain residential developments. These provisions are legally problematic. House Bill one oh six, which was recently passed by the state legislature, preempts city ordinances that prohibit or restrict or that have the effect of prohibiting or restricting the source of energy utility services provided by a regulated public utility. There's been talk about the ordinance that the ordinance creates an incentive and not a restriction and that this is consistent with House Bill one oh six. We don't think that's the case. First of all, an incentive for a developer results in a restriction on the residence. Just to say that again, an incentive for a developer will result in a restriction for the residents within the development. That restriction is prohibited by House Bill one oh six. Just for example, a developer comes to the city and asks for a density bonus for an all geothermal development. The city must ensure that the development remains all geothermal. But any restriction on the resident's ability to use other sources of energy is preempted by House Bill one oh six. Second, House Bill one oh six focuses on the effect of an ordinance. Even if the city views this as an incentive, if the incentive has its intended effect, that violates House Bill one oh six. And then third, Intermountain Gas is obligated by state law to serve all customers within its certificated area in accordance with the rules of the Idaho Public Utilities Commission. This is true even if the customer lives in a development that is supposed to be all geothermal or all electric. So if Intermountain Gas receives a request for a natural gas connection, it's legally obligated to provide that connection regardless of any restriction on energy sources within the development. And this state law obligation to serve to provide natural gas service would preempt any attempt to create an all geothermal or an all electric development. Just sort of briefly summarize, there are legal concerns regarding the provisions of the draft. The concerns relate to its passage as well as its implementation and its enforcement. We're happy to hold a broader discussion on the issues. A deeper analysis is in our comment letter. But Intermountain Gas would ask that the provisions related to all electric and all geothermal developments be removed from the draft ordinance.
Madam Mayor, I have a question. Thanks for your comments, Preston. Were you consulted by the city at all in the development of the zoning code and this incentive?
I I was not. I don't believe Intermountain Gas was as well.
Can we get clarification on that from Tim?
Sure. And I'll say about a year and a half, two years ago even, we sat down with Intermountain Gas, discussed our commitment not to make requirements, but interest and incentives as well as partnership to look at how they could respond to what we would expect to be future market expectations that they too are innovative in the clean heat space. So we've had those discussions, and that House Bill passed this this session. So after. So after, um we had done much of the work on the zoning code rewrite. But thank you for your comments.
No problem.
All right, next we have Drew Alexander.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Uh, my name is Drew Alexander and I'm here tonight representing Boise State University. University's address is nineteen ten University Drive, Boise, Idaho. Again, I'd like to start and echo what many people have already said is to appreciate the long effort that city staff has spent on this effort. Uh, the outreach to the university has been consistent and thorough. And we appreciate all the work. It's an all hands on deck effort and it has been for years. So, thank you. We find ourselves frequently grateful for a decision that was made almost a hundred years ago to repurpose an airfield into what we know as Boise State University. We've continued to grow rapidly like the city and the community around us. And I'm going to hit you with some facts and figures to give you a little context of where we're at now. We currently employ just north of three thousand faculty and staff. Our enrollment is now over twenty six thousand total students. We have six million square feet of space on our campus across two hundred buildings. Thirty five hundred beds of on campus housing. And one thing I like to talk about, I don't know if it's true, Jimmy, but I think we have one of the highest concentrations of pedestrians and cyclists in the community. It's a very vibrant, active, energetic area. And if you haven't spent time on campus at one o'clock on a Tuesday or Thursday, I highly recommend it. There's just few places in Boise like that. Part of that context and part of that condition creates uh some challenges because of our location, the boundaries that we have. The Boise River, Julia Davis, Capitol Boulevard, Broadway, and established neighborhoods near campus. One of the main things that we are appreciative of of this draft is that it relaxes our dimensional requirements for growth on our campus. It's treating campus as part of the downtown planning area, which it is, and allowing us to have more control over the projects that we do. Any of that gives us the ability to think very strategic about projects that we do, lessening the impact on our edges on those important boundaries and allowing us to build more uh strategic infill projects with an infill lens so that we can continue to participate and collaborate with adjacent neighborhoods and community members, but uh more in a proactive way and a less reactive way and focus our growth where it was really near existing infrastructure, our geothermal loop, our steam tunnels, our existing parking infrastructure. So we really look forward to actually applying this model to campus where we don't have a seventy five foot height limit across the board. The other thing I'll say really fast is that we have a robust inventory of housing, both for students and a growing inventory for faculty and staff. We have an employee housing assistance program that has twenty five rental homes right now, but we're very eager to explore opportunities to expand that. And we we think this code allows us to do that in ways that are still doing so in participation with adjoining neighborhoods and increasing that inventory. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I do have a question. Um, thanks for for being here today, Drew, and thanks for being involved in this process all the way through. I know you've been very involved. Um, I am curious if this modern zoning code increases uh BSU's ability to provide housing for students? Um, or if there's still is going to need to be a heavy reliant on the private sector to do the housing for students as well? And just any comments you have in that area, I think would be helpful um on how this uh modern zoning code might impact that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hallie Burton. It does help. It allows us to consider different types of housing, more intense housing or vertical housing. Where I went to my undergrad, for example, was in rural Indiana. And they had uh residence halls twice as tall as what we have on our campus in a community that has a tenth of the population. And so we're really going to be able to look at our campus as a interval part of downtown and rethink the dimensional aspects of it. We're about to um begin construction this year on a new residence hall right along the river. It's a very exciting site. It's going to be four hundred and fifty beds for first year students. That project, if we were to revisit it a few years from now, I think we could have done something that was um slightly different, slightly more vertical and uh preserve even more land for other projects in the core of campus. Um, we're not done with our housing effort, but our focus right now is on that first year student housing project. And I do think this code really allows us to have a a much broader set of tools for the housing that we that we do develop.
Yeah, thank you, Drew.
Yes, and thanks for your service on the committee.
You're welcome.
All right, we've got one more on the list. Does anybody else that's been sitting here the whole evening intend to testify? Yep, I think you're the person on the list. Are you Erin Reese? Come on up. Anybody else here planning on testifying? All right, you can go. If you're planning to testify, please come sit in the front row and I'll just have you step up one by one. All you others are just here for kicks. All right. Welcome.
Hi, Mayor. Uh, I'm Erin. I embody perfectly the homeless problem. I uh lived in Boise for uh about three years ago. And I left for the Ukrainian crisis because I thought I could help by being a journalist. Um, I did what I could there and left and uh worked with refugees in Switzerland. And then I was deported for the crime of journalism. I have here my uh emergency passport. It's odd, but it's me. Uh, having just uh recently come back, uh Boise is the state that I think is my home. I uh I have a state ID here. I'm a member of uh the Cathedral Cathedral of the Rockies uh church. I do Habitat for Humanity here uh with them, a member of the Y. I can't um, I can't afford to live indoors. I've been sleeping on your lawn right here for the last three weeks. Uh, and I just uh would like to, I don't want to live in a shelter while I find employment. I've been like washing dishes uh just so I don't starve, she don't tell. But I do have, I have been looking for employment. I even have employment opportunities uh later this week. Should I be able to, you know, not be hassled uh for uh sleeping on your lawn where I feel safe and watched by the cameras? Um, I don't want to live in a shelter. I uh it's a, it's really stressful. The uh librarian, social worker understands very much why I'm not a good candidate to to live in there. So I just am kind of, please ask me questions, but I'm just uh hoping that I can continue to, I'll call it a protest or whatever. But like, you know, sleep in a tent on your lawn while I uh get um my feet underneath me. Um, I am nine years sober. I have, you know, I've been to college for ten years. I speak multiple languages. I'm very employable. I just, a part of, I have a minute, a part of what makes the housing crisis so miserable is that when I try to apply for a job, someone in like at like a restaurant is going to says to me regularly, oh dude, you're going to get hired by a, a, you know, uh the Statesman or someone like that, as if the Statesman would publish me. But like, um, the Capital Sun, I've applied for jobs, or uh even at BSU, it would, all of that. They think that someone like that's going to hire me and I'll leave and they don't want to invest in training me. And they don't, those jobs don't pay much anyways. But meanwhile, uh no one wants a journalist and Julian Assange is being extradited and journalism is on. I can't even make page eight of a French rag in Switzerland without being deported for uh exposing police brutality. So it's it's just uh, it's just hard to get work, even good, important work that you would, you would want, I hope, in a community. Um, that actually, no matter what a house costs, I al- we also need jobs that match, um whatever, I'd pay whatever for a house, as long as my job could, you know, give me the money to do that. Thank you for your time. Please ask me questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Sir.
Good evening. Uh, best to place my name on the the wrong list that was out in the hallway.
Oh, there might be another one, or am I a miss? No, I don't think I missed you, but that, don't worry about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, name is Daniel Hutcheson, one oh two North Jantoni uh on the East End. While I'm very much in favor of environmental protection, energy conservation and affordable housing. However, while the proposed code that's sitting in front of you is full of happy talk on these issues, I find that it addresses none of them. And in fact, if implemented, will seriously damage Boise to some extent beyond repair. Removing existing yards to make room for high density housing will reduce the tree canopy, the green areas, and make the hot roof signature of the city much higher. Increased roof areas with reduced green yard areas will damage water quality, increase pollution, and increase flooding. Displacing residents for modest housing in favor of high end apartments does not improve affordability. In fact, it only displaces the elderly and the modest income residents, replacing affordable homes with high rent apartments subject to uncontrollable and unannounced increases in rents with the money flowing to the out of state developers and investors. Why does the plan in front of you shield the north end from development and protects the character of the foothills but not the character of the other neighborhoods in Boise? Implement in this plan may achieve your hidden objectives of increased congestion, increased homelessness, increased crime, and increased environmental damage. However, I ask you to consider, instead of exempting the north end and the foothills from the impacts of this plan, implement the plan only in the north end and only in the foothills where many of you live. After you've replaced the inefficient outdated homes in the north end that are fossil fuel consuming with three story, multiple unit apartments and adding twelve rental units per acre in the mega states and the foothills, adding retail boarding houses, halfway houses, neighborhood bars and apartments throughout both the north end and the foothills, then you can bring back and talk to us about implementing it throughout the sys- uh city. Or are you the newbies that your planning commission referred to when people were making public testimony a few months ago? Why does the plan in front of you exclude the review, public review of individual projects? Why does it delegate this authority of the city council to the planning uh staff? And why does the planning leave major decisions on zoning implementation to the planning director rather than the city council? I ask you to reject this, reject your consultants, and get back to your job of managing the city of Boise. Thank you.
Mr. Hutcheson, I have a question. So early in your testimony, you spoke about taking out pe- taking out yards and having a lot of lot coverage. And I know that that's been kind of an ongoing conversation as we roll this out. One of the things that we've been considering is limiting lot coverage um much in the way that we do in a lot of other places to thirty five percent of the lot. Do you think that that would help? And that's regardless of how many units there are. Do you think that that would help that situation?
No, it would not. If you have a seven thousand foot lot and cover thirty five percent of it, you recut that lot in half and cover each half, what, thirty five percent? You're actually covering the original lot area by seventy percent. Tree canopy is only good when it's above the roof. When you put the roof above the tree canopy, you increase the hot uh signature, hot roof signature of the city and makes the trees ineffective. Tree shade is good below the tree, above the tree, tree shade doesn't do anything.
Okay, so you're just opposed, no matter what kind of concessions that we make, no matter what kind of adjustments that we make, just you just want us to reject it?
Uh, you can't double the density and keep the density low.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
And I did find your name. Um, is Linda not here anymore? You signed up on a newsletter sheet, not on a sign in sheet? Okay, great. Sir. Welcome.
Mayor and city council, my name is Walter Rock. And I live in the new Thomas Logan Building at five twenty eight West Grove Street. And I have many concerns about this. Parking is a huge concern. Uh, for example, with this new Thomas Logan Building, the building is very nice. It it was well planned fairly well, but there were other glitches that occurred during its conception. Originally, there was sixty bike spaces for inside the bu- building. By the time it was erected, that was reduced to only twelve. There are apartments from the third floor through the seventh floor. And so there's numerous apartments in the building and there's not enough bike space for the residents alone. And there's also no bike racks on the outside for uh bicycle parking for visitors. The other problem is there's no parking on the street or in the parking lots for residents. It's, you have to pay a hundred and fifty dollars a month to park your car. And as a senior citizen, that's very concerning because I have a long history in the state of Idaho. My father's family is third generation. My mother's family is fourth generation. I'm lifetime Idahoan. In the sixties and seventies, my grandmother lived here in Boise and my uncle, my dad's brother, also lived in Boise. In the late eighties, my brother and I both relocated back here to Boise. And I've lived in Boise from then on to present. I've lived across various uh neighborhoods around around Boise. So I'm familiar with the different neighborhoods. And again, I'm very concerned about what's going on with parking. You know, to put this into perspective, picture, if you will, that tomorrow, starting tomorrow, you, the mayor and the city council, picture paying four thousand dollars a month to park your car because you can't park it in your own driveway. That, that's, that's one of the major concerns. And growth in this community has to be done smartly and properly to address all the issues. I've lived homeless in this community as well, off and on. Uh, and you know, planning for the curing of the homeless problem, i- it's something that we can do here if things are addressed right. You know, streamlining the process for the sanctuary project and getting that going and and doing other things that uh will improve the situation for the current homeless and reducing the future homeless population is very important.
Walter, um you've hit time. I'll let you go a little bit over. I think you've got a question here from Councilmember Hallie Burton.
Okay.
Um, Madam Mayor, uh Walter, no question for you. Thanks for coming. I really, really appreciate it. If staff could put a pin in this question as well, because I do believe this was a conversation specifically about the Logan, how the bike parking issue was created, and I believe that that was something that we addressed and fixed in the plan. And so I'll ask a question of staff later about that specific issue to make sure that we've kind of addressed that going forward. I think that we already have, but I'll double check at a future meeting. Um, so staff just put a pin in that question if you would.
The council member also um remind you, I'm sure you haven't forgotten, last night, I think it was Marissa Keith, suggested we should be looking at bike requirements per bedroom rather than per, I hate saying unit, per home. Um, and so that is something that I expect staff will address with us on Thursday. And and had that been done, Mr. Rock, uh with the Logan, I think that would have met some of the needs as well. All right, thank you, sir, very much. Anybody else? We're here. If you're going to talk tomorrow, you could talk today. I see like two of you. Nope, alrighty. We will.
Hey, Madam Mayor, before we um adjourn or what, um, I'd like to get some clarification on how staff is compiling some of the suggestions and the process for that.
Uh, sh- sure. The staff has taken, I I would say, you're going to come back Thursday with answers based on conversations yesterday, anything that came up today. And this is not a uh planning and zoning appeal, so there can also be discussion with staff um and with council leadership apart from being on the dais, if there are things that you want to make sure are are covered or you've got questions about.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will recess until tomorrow at four o'clock. Okay, and tomorrow, we're going to start at four. We've, we're going to do the same thing. Everybody that's signed up already will start with and we'll see who else is here. We'll break for dinner at about five thirty and then pick back up at six. And we'll see you tomorrow. Thank you all so much. Appreciate those that stayed with us online. And we'll see you tomorrow. Thank you all so much. Appreciate those that stayed with us online and those of you that are still here with us today.